Okay, second time with the charm.
Are we ready yet, Alex?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I'm ready whenever you are.
I am ready, so let's go. Okay, I'd like to call to order the continued Malibu City Council meeting of January 25th here at 5 o'clock on January 28th. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Farrar.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Here.
Councilmember Yurin.
Here.
Mayor Proton Grisanti.
You're muted, Paul.
Here.
And Mayor Pearson.
Here.
Everkorn.
Okay, great. We're back to what's now Item 7A, Appointments to Subcommittee, Ad Hoc Committees, and Outside Agencies. We've already done the first one, and I'm just gonna go in order, so stick with me. Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee.
I think we had some public speakers, but I could be mistaken.
I thought we had already handled them on this item, but John or Reva, let me know where we're at, if I missed that.
We didn't take public comment on this item, no.
Oh, we did not? Okay, then I apologize. Do we have public speakers?
Uh, two.
Okay.
Mark Bowdy and Lance Simmons.
Okay, great. Uh, Mark, you're up.
Hello, let me know if you can hear me.
I can hear you, Mark.
Great, so I'll try and make this quick. A couple of people have told me that I should let everybody know that I'm a lawyer, 34 years in the downtown LA courtrooms, and I teach trial advocacy at UCLA Law School. Three quick points, and then hopefully we can move through this meeting fast. I think you now have two competing human resources complaints. One by a councilperson against the city manager, one by the city manager directed at the councilperson. I believe the public record shows the suggested administrative leave has been rejected by the city manager. I believe the council, as a five-person body, should take a closed-session meeting and think in terms of a 60- to 90-day order, limiting the interaction between the city councilperson and the city manager until an outside investigation by a labor and employment lawyer can be done. That's a very common step taken in the private sector in most of these types of conflicting and competing situations. Second, the, uh, one of the councilpersons, uh, one of the rookies appears to have publicly violated closed-session rules through authorized on-the-record quotes in the patch. I have a very high degree of respect for the skills of the best, best in Krieger lawyers. I think advice needs to be given on whether or not that councilperson should be censured. Three, uh, many residents want, uh, councilpersons Grisanti, Pearson, and Ferrer to start running the city three to two so that business can get done if the two rookies can't get there, can't get on the same page. Councilman Yurin, we want you, as a rookie newly elected, to start accepting the nominations by the other three and not trying to direct work to, uh, the other rookie. Three, and this is important, uh, there's some things cropping up on a case in Florida that suggest that the newly-elected councilperson Silverstein cannot be put on any significant committees. Uh, and Councilman Silverstein, please keep your comments on 7B as short as possible. Do not do a long PowerPoint. Thank you.
Sit. Thank you. Sorry, I took the sit for part of his comments for a second. Okay, our next public speaker?
Is Lance Simmons.
Okay. Are you there, Lance? I see you, you're on mute. There you go.
Uh, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Uh, I, I want to just say, uh, from the beginning, uh, these comments that I'm gonna make are, are meant to be constructive. "I have watched with considerable dismay the conduct of city council in the months following the recent election." And let me state from the outset, "I did not pass judgment on the city manager during the election and suggested that I would not do so until an independent investigation was conducted." "That position did not carry the day, so here we are." "I wish not to be combative, but would like to offer some suggestions as to how to navigate the rather nasty state of affairs that is hindering your ability to deal with issues that affect your citizens." "For over four decades, I served in senior-level policy positions in federal, state, and local government. I've authored two books on public policy and have taught college courses on public policy." "First and foremost, the guiding principle in our representative democratic system is compromise." It is not a bad word or a concept, but it is necessary in order to resolve disputes among good-intentioned policymakers. Oftentimes, no one side triumphs over the other, but rather coor heads and maturity and professionalism affords reasonable resolution to complex and controversial issues. Provocative bloviating is better left on the political battlefield. You all made it through. You all have the responsibility to all citizens, not just the ones who voted for you. Catchy slogans like 'I won't back down' are the kinds of things that reflect either an unwillingness or inability to work within the confines of a legislative body. I will note that in the previous, in the recent resurrection, insurrection on January 6th at the US Capitol, armed provocateurs left a note behind on the Senate rostrum which read, "We will never back down." "With all due respect to former Malibu resident Tom Petty, it's a great song, but not an operating leadership principle. Keep your mind open to new ideas and different approaches to solving problems. Having the flexibility to grow is the key to effective leadership. No one is, no one is infallible. We all face decisions in life where we do not have the luxury of saying either my way or the highway. Give yourself the ability to grow." "Another key ingredient to facilitating an effective public policy process is to maintain civility, comity, and respect for competing views. Name-calling in public slights have no place in our civil discourse. Obstruction, deflection, and harassment are antithetical to democratic process. You have all been awarded a solemn responsibility, one which carries with it the need to carry on with decorum. So take a deep breath, show respect to those who you now represent." Thank you.
Thank you, Lance.
That concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we are back to 7A, and we are on our second Subcommittee, the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee. Do I have any nominations? Nobody? Steve?
Sounds, sounds like a nomination by anybody else. I'd like to be on that committee.
Okay, Steve would like to be on that committee. I, you know, if it's environmental, I wouldn't want to join in you.
I'd love to have you.
Okay, okay.
That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
A second motion.
Okay, um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are on the Library Subcommittee. Nominations? Oh, sorry, Karen?
Uh, I currently serve on that Subcommittee. I would like to stay on, and I would like to nominate Mayor Pearson.
Okay, I, I would, I would accept on this one. I guess I, okay, second, okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Grisanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We now, another second. We now have three subcommittees that don't meet, as far as I can tell. One met once due to an emergency. Do we want to, let me ask you a question, Reva. When, when committees, like subcommittees, don't meet, should we just disband them and bring them back if we need to, or, or what's the best way to go about that?
Um, so yeah, the subcommittees, if you choose not to have them, um, uh, at least, uh, Parks, Public Safety, and Public Works all do have commissions that are established. So, um, you know, the city attorney can certainly speak to the legalities of it, but I believe you could make a motion if you didn't want to have them. And then if you decide later on that we needed a Subcommittee, we could certainly, uh, bring an item forward to that effect.
Okay, Steve?
I, I would just recommend we don't disband them. I mean, we just don't leave them here, leave them vacant, so if we need them, it's easy to bring them back. We don't have to go through nine miles of barbed wire and broken glass to get there.
Why don't you make that a motion? It's a good motion.
I will, I will make, I just, I, whatever I just said, I'll make that a motion.
Okay, I will second that motion. Oh, sorry, Bruce.
Yes, question, which, which, which Subcommittee are we talking about?
Parks and Rec Subcommittee, Public Safety Subcommittee, and Public Works Subcommittee.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Okay, sure, of course. Can we do three at once and have roll call on that? Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay, let's have roll call on that.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we come to the races, and I'd like to offer on this one, I'd like to nominate Steve and I, because we've been on the Planning Commission, which makes a lot of sense to me on this particular one. That would be my motion. Uh, Bruce?
Well, you know, if you wanted to just follow Mr. Bowdy's, um, suggestion that I'd be on those subcommittees, I guess I won't have as much work to do, and that's fine, but I haven't been put on one.
I, uh, I don't feel that way. Um, this, just going committee by committee.
Well, this is the last one, I think.
No, we have a lot more, we have a lot more stuff to decide on here.
No, there, there are no other subcommittees.
Um, Steve?
Yeah, Mikey, I, you know, I, I think I'd love to be on, on the racist committee with you, but I do think we owe Bruce a committee, and I think he has, and give him a chance to learn what's going on in Malibu. I think that's a good job for him, a good place for him to get a better perspective of what the hell is going on. Uh, so I would recommend you and he subservise in that committee, despite what this lawyer said.
I mean, we're talking, some committees, very few, there's a lot more appointments to make.
I understand. This is, this is one that, I think, if, if you're gonna get on that one, that's one you have to understand what's going on in the city. You've got to get yourself familiarized with the, the code that we have, with this coastal commission's impact. Uh, and I think that's a learning process that if, will help Bruce become a better city councilperson.
I, I would agree, but I think it needs some experience, because the learning curve is fairly steep, as you know, and...
I know, I, I've been there, I understand.
I think, I, I, I think it'd be a lot more fair to counsel and Silverstein to give them a little more time to understand how these issues are done at the local level. But that's my personal opinion. Nothing, nothing personal, just that's how I feel. I think, I, I, yeah, I think that's, that's not a great place to throw someone into the water, um, in my personal opinion.
I think you throw them in the water and see if they can swim or drown. You give them a chance, that's, that's how you learn stuff. You're fourth, he's smart, he'll figure it out.
So what's your motion?
My motion is that, so Bruce, and you serve on these racist committees.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Can we have roll call?
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
No.
Mayor Proton Grisanti?
No.
Mayor Pearson?
No.
Motion carries.
Do we have another motion? Steve, so you...
Yeah, if you're not gonna put Bruce on, I'll join you on that committee.
Okay, if we feel we want to change things later, we have that right.
We can do that, yeah, I just, right, let's just get through this one.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll second it. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are at the City Council Policy Review Ad Hoc Committee. Karen?
I currently serve on that, uh, ad hoc committee, and I would like to nominate Council, excuse me, Mayor Protown Grisanti to serve on it with me.
You were on the, um, ad hoc committee before, as I remember, Karen?
Yes, that's correct.
Never got a chance to meet, so...
Yeah, we had two meetings scheduled on the calendar, and, uh... Yeah, we had two meetings scheduled on the calendar, and, uh, at neither meeting was the ad hoc committee able to achieve a quorum.
Understood.
Only two people.
Correct, we were unable to achieve a quorum. That's correct.
Okay.
Happy moment. Uh, I can't remember whose hand was up first, I was looking down writing.
Probably Bruce, like Bruce go first.
Steve, go ahead.
Uh, you know, look, you've had this committee that never met, uh, I would like to recommend, and, and Bruce can come back with, with whatever comments, but I'd like to rec, like to recommend that Bruce and I get on that committee, and I guarantee you, we will have a quorum. And we will make some suggestions, and I think what, what it'll do is give this council a chance, you know, we can't do anything by ourselves, but we'll present you with ideas you guys can think about. Uh, and I think it gives us a chance to update some of these policies that have been in place for a very, very long time and need updating, so I'm gonna recommend Bruce and I get on the committee.
Okay, I'm lost, if we, we had a, do we have a motion from Karen, I'm just trying to get the motions right here.
Yes, I made a motion for, uh, myself to remain on the committee and, uh, to be joined by Mayor Pro Tem Grisanti, and I just have to comment, that committee did not meet, not because I did not show up.
No, nobody's blaming you, I'm just saying it never met and no changes were ever made.
And I, and I, and I would not dispute that the policies need review.
Right, and I think we've got some people right now who are anxious to make that happen. And, and
I think we have five of us, just to make it happen.
And we can guarantee you, we'll get a quorum.
Um, I think I can too, thanks Steve.
Paul? Paul, you got a hand up next to you?
Yes, I've had my hand up for quite a while, I raised my hand, first of all, to second Karen's nomination of me.
Okay, gotcha. So we have our first motion and a second, can we have a roll call please?
Well, can we have discussion?
Sure, we have a motion on the table.
Right.
But go ahead.
We have to do the second one first, right?
Say again?
The sec, you have to do the second motion first, if you've got two motions on the floor at the same time.
I don't think we had another one, we didn't have another one.
We have a motion by Council, Councilwoman Farrar, and a second by Councilmember Grisanti, the, the motion is up for debate now. I don't think there's a second motion, Ms. Glazier, I'm pregnant from
That's where we're at, I believe, too, yes Bruce?
So, um, I think I have demonstrated, more than anyone here, an interest, I mean, it's one thing to say one has an interest, it's another thing to show it, and, um, I think I've demonstrated both through before I came on to the council, as well as the work I've done over the past two months. Uh, not only an interest in being on this committee, but preparedness to do the work and already began doing the work that this committee should be doing. And, um, I think I have a lot to contribute by way of my knowledge of process as well, that would be very helpful to this committee. And, um, I have been passed over for the other five so far. Oh, and before I did that, I, I, I wanted to ask, I, I, I wanna understand from our council whether this really is an ad hoc committee, because my understanding from doing some, uh, from seminars, actually from Cal Cities, was ad hoc committees are for a specific discreet purpose, for a specific discreet time. I could be, in fact, that's what I learned, it could be wrong, but this seems to me to be a standing committee for a, for a generic purpose. Albeit, vis a vis policy, so I didn't know whether this really is a proper ad hoc committee, but whatever it is, I'd like to be on it.
Councilmember Silverstein, you are correct, an ad hoc committee is just that, it's a committee that has a defined task and a defined end time, and it reports back to the council upon completion of the findings, and then it is disbanded, you are correct.
And, and this is a committee that, my understanding is, will be go, ongoing indefinitely, because policies are always subject to being reviewed and revised as, as things come up and, and time passes.
Yeah, it was only formed not under two years ago, the problem it had is it never met. So, um, I think both points are, are valid, Karen?
Yeah, I would just also like to note that I too have, uh, been working on policies for the city, I've been reviewing policies from other municipalities, and I have lots of improvements to suggest going into it.
I think we all agree it's an area that needs improvement, for sure, Steve?
Uh, Bruce, do you have a, can you give us any perspective of how, if we got on this committee, how that might impact your, uh, motion for transparency? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah. I, do, do, does everybody wanna know?
Well, I don't know if this is the, the time to get into that, to be honest.
How would it impact this committee?
Excuse me?
I'm asking him how his motion might impact this committee.
She might impact this committee, I'm not following you, I'm sorry, I'm probably just missing it.
Well, do I, should, can, can I answer Steve's question?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I guess, yes.
Yeah, so, so if, if I were on this committee, with, if I were on this committee, and I were on it with Steve, or Mikey, for that matter, um, I would be inclined to, um, substantially cut back on what we're going to be discussing if we ever get to seven F, and take those issues to the, um, committee level, and hash them out and see where we might bring them back as. Um, but if, um, and I'm not saying this is, this isn't like a quid pro quo, I'm saying that that is something I would be inclined to do, it's something I thought about before this meeting. But if I'm not on that committee, if I'm being frozen out of everything, including policy, I'm just gonna go ahead and present what I believe is appropriate to present, and, well, well, you know, you can have your committee.
Okay, um, there's a motion, can we have a roll call please?
Uh, Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
No.
Councilmember Yaring?
No.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The Disaster Response Committee and Disaster Response and Recovery Ad Hoc, um, I think its work is done. Um, do we leave it empty? Or, I guess Karen and I can still be on it, but it's, it's done, I think.
Well, as, as an ad hoc, yeah, that committee's work has been finished.
What are we doing, an ad hoc committee's work is finished, how do we, how do we, how do we take?
You can disband that ad hoc mayor if it's completed its task.
Okay. Um, then I would make a mo, yes, Bruce?
I was gonna move to disband that committee.
Okay, I'll second his motion. Um, okay, a roll call please?
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar? Councilmember Yaring?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, next up is the School Separation Ad Hoc. Come, Ad Hoc Committee, Karen, sorry.
Okay, um, I currently sit on this committee, most people know, I've been working on this, this time around for the last twelve years. I've worked on it prior to that. Um, and, um, with Councilmember Mullen, no longer being, uh, on the council, I would like to nominate myself to stay on, and Mayor Pearson to join me, as he's the only member of the council who attended our local schools, and whose children also attended our local schools, having graduated recently.
Okay, I would second it, Steve?
Why, why does Mikey's kid going to that school make a difference?
In my opinion, because he's familiar with the system, certainly more than anybody else on the council.
Familiar with what system?
With our school district.
Mikey's kids went to school, Mikey didn't work for the school district.
I never said that.
I'm just trying to understand your That's what you said, you want Mikey to be there, because he's been, kids went to school, how does that qualify him to, and they qualify him, I'm not arguing. I think Mikey's smart, Mikey can deal with a whole bunch of things, but I'm just trying to understand the basis of your comment.
I never said Mikey worked for the school district.
Worked for the school district, I'm saying
So, hang on, hang on, so I've been on, I've been on a number of committees at the school, um, including in Santa Monica, and where the district headquarters is, um.
So, Mikey, I don't have a problem with you being on it, I was just questioning the logic we, she was choosing to try and get you there.
Bruce?
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally in favor of the composition that's being proposed, and I'll, and I'll vote that way. But I have the same question about this committee for the council, whether the, the lawyer of the council. Um, this has been in existence, I think, for some period of time. It is, in fact, for a specific purpose, but I don't think it's for a discreet period of time, and again, I thought that the rule, the law, basically, is that you can't have ad hoc committees that are for indefinite periods of time.
That's correct, Councilmember Silverstein, I, I don't know that, the length of, the, the nature of this committee or its length, um, but you are correct, it cannot exist for an indefinite period of time, if that's the case, it should be converted to a standing committee that's subject to the Brown Act, i.e. noticing agenda requirements and things of that nature. Um, I, I leave that to your, to your all, uh, discretion as to how it's been, and if you feel it's, a report is forthcoming shortly, uh, that's gonna wind this committee down.
And I, and I would support the composition that's been proposed, but I, I think it really should be a standing committee, because I don't want to get us into hot water with doing some good work, and then it turning out that it was not a proper committee.
Paul, I saw your hand up.
I, I'm in favor of this continuing in any form, because the, this system is, the situation is finally looks like it's coming to a head. And it would be a shame to have someone who isn't part of the council telling us what happened thirdhand. So.
Karen?
Um, I will just say in response to Councilmember Silverstein's, um, comments about this, uh, being a standing committee or an ad hoc, certainly, when this project is, has reached a conclusion, I think everybody has every intention of this ad hoc committee disbanding, once the school district is separated, or we get to some conclusion on it, obviously, there will be no need for it to exist.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, and I'm not debating that point, I just think that it may be because this is such a prolonged activity, it doesn't fall within the same concept as the, um, examination of the disaster response, because that was pursuant, hire someone, get a report, it was a, it was a tight timeframe, it wasn't a specific timeframe, but it was a tight timeframe. We don't know when, if ever, this is going to be resolved. And again, I, I, I like you being on the committee, I like Mikey being on the committee, I just don't wanna, I don't want you to do that work, and then someone challenges it, and we find out that it wasn't done right.
John, could, John, could you take a look at this issue and, and give us a recommendation?
Sorry, can I, can I address something?
Yes.
I, I've worked on this for twelve years, as I said, I was elected to the council just over two years ago, so by no means has the city had this committee stood up for the last twelve years.
October ninth, two thousand and seventeen.
Well, I don't think, I don't think I said that happened.
Oh, I, I'm not saying that you did, but I just wanna make sure that, that my tenure working on this project was not misunderstood as the city's.
No, and that, and that tenure is why I support your being on the committee, wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, John, take a look at this maybe, and, uh, report back at us the next, at the next city council meeting. Um, if there, if the form of this ad hoc committee is okay to continue or not.
I'll be good.
In the meantime, ma- in the meantime, Mayor, do you want to, um,
Yeah, let's vote on it, and let, and let's move forward. Can we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes, with a footnote.
Do you wanna say that now, or after?
I, I, I approve, I, I, I approve, I vote for the composition that we're proposing.
Councilmember Yaring?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Um. We now have California Contract Cities. Which, uh, Karen, aren't you next to be president? Oh, that's, uh, now that's the CAG, sorry, I took that back.
I'm currently Vice President of the CAG.
So Contract Cities, Steve?
Mikey, I sat through the Contract Cities meeting today, I thought it was extremely interesting. I thought it was extremely informative, and I, if possible, I would like to be on that committee.
Okay, um.
And you were there also.
Yes, I was, I try not to miss them, you
I learned a lot today, and I think that would be very, I, I think I can contribute to that committee.
Okay, um. So would someone else like to join on that committee?
Why don't you stay there, you were good.
Um, okay, I will, I will stay there. That's fine. I'm gonna listen in anyhow, so.
Yeah, I remind you, right, we're gonna play, let's play.
Okay. Need a second?
Uh, I'll second Steve's motion of you and I, that's how I'm taking it, and can we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Yaring?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next to JPIA, and I wanna nominate Bruce, I think this is an, an absolutely perfect place for him to be with his skill set. Um, that would be nine, my nomination. And we have I believe I would nominate him as the delegate, and we need an alternate too. Paul, I would nominate Paul as an alternate, or were you actually trying to speak?
No, that's fine.
Okay, can I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, can we have a roll call?
Uh, Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yaring?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries, and a quick clarification for CCA's, uh, the Contract Cities Association, who was delegate and alternate on that?
Uh, Karen, wait, Karen is the delegate, yes.
I was.
You were.
Yes.
But now?
Oh, um.
You and Steve, but who is the delegate and who is the alternate?
Mikey, you, you got the lead, go ahead, I'll be al, I got no problem with that.
Okay, um, my work schedule, you'll probably mostly be the
I'm just saying, yeah, whatever it was, we'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Heather. Um, Clean Power Alliance. I see, Karen?
Um, I would like to nominate Mayor Pearson and, uh, Councilmember Yaring.
I'll second it.
Okay, Bruce?
I was gonna second, but already it's been in.
Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Yaring?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Does my five hundred dollars call, cover all these committees I'm on? Does my five hundred dollars a month cover all these committees I'm on?
You get a dollar a committee, no.
Actually, it takes away a dollar for every committee.
You get a dollar an hour. Okay, next, um, we have the CAG?
I know both of you guys, go ahead Karen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, sorry, keep looking down at my paper. Yes, Karen.
Um, yes, I am currently the, uh, representative to the CAG, and, um, uh, as of the last meeting, I am the CAG uh, Vice President, and I would like to stay, uh, as the city's representative to the CAG. Uh, and I would like to nominate Mikey to stay on, uh, as the alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, um. Yep, okay, roll call please?
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Yaring?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Grisanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have the Los Angeles International Airport Community Noise Roundtable, uh, that I think Rick was on before, if I'm not mistaken, yes, Paul?
I'd like on that, and I have a good working relationship with the Public Works Director, so.
That's right, you've been on Public Works how many years?
Sixteen or so.
Uh, yes, Bruce?
I'll second Paul's nomination.
Okay, um, I hear rain, um. Roll call please?
Mayor Pro Tem Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Yaring?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. One second. So, League of Cities is the mayor and the mayor pro tem. So League of Cities is the mayor and the mayor pro tem. The LA County City Select, oh, sorry.
Okay. Um, I've had this discussion with um John Cotty. And I'm not going to belabor it or or get into details, but I do believe that the election of Mayor Protem was ineffective. And the the lead for that is we did it before anybody was sworn in. In fact, we weren't even sworn in till the next day formally, but we weren't sworn in even ceremonially. Till after we had discussion and vote. And I think to do it properly, we should have a revote. I don't think we can have it right now because it's not on the agenda. But I do believe we ought to have one. I don't expect a different result. Again, this is to make sure that we are acting properly.
Um, John, do you wish to comment on that?
Mayor Pearson, members of the council, good evening. Um, technically, Councilmember Silverstein is correct. Um, the constitution requires that you. Um, before you enter your duties, you take and subscribe an oath to an oath. Um, if the council wanted to revisit that decision, it could place a matter on the agenda to either ratify or reconsider it. Um, I have uh discussed with Councilmember Silverstein the notion of the de facto officer doctrine and believe that that. Action is is not necessarily necessary, but again, if the council wants to revisit the decision, it's more than welcome to.
Do we uh know how other cities handle this?
Other cities usually vote after they've been sworn in.
I think he's correct. The this election and your last election, you. Appointed the mayor pro tem and then did the ceremonial swearing in. Technically, that should have been in reverse. It's been in reverse in most of your elections prior to that. Why the change? I don't know, but nevertheless, it is, if the council wishes to re-agendize that, it's welcome to.
Um, well, we need to, that's why I'm turning, yes, Paul?
I I just have a question. Uh, I I was sworn in by my wife. Was that of no effect?
When were you sworn in?
After.
The issue was, the issue was when you were sworn in. So the council took a vote as to the mayor pro tem election.
Right.
And there were two council members that had been sworn in at the time, Councilmember Fair and Mayor Pearson. At that point in time, three others voted on the action and you had not yet subscribed to the. Again, I believe that there's there's legal doctrine that allows that action to to remain valid. But again, it's within your sound discretion if you wanted to re-agendize that and ratify the action. That would obviously prevent, well, I guess the next committee is Mayor Protem anyway, so. Whoever becomes Mayor Protem, if the council does decide to take that action, would become the appointment to this committee again.
John, just to be clear, when you say there's legal doctrine that could support it, it's untested question when it comes to this issue, correct?
I've not seen a case dealing with actions by a council. In this situation, no, but I do believe there's authority to support the action, yes, as we've talked about.
Um, well, maybe I I don't want to drag this out, so. John, could you do a little research for us and let us know and give us a recommendation? If we need to bring it back, we bring it back.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, yes, I can, I can do that. I think Council Gresanti, because of.
Yes, I I see that.
Yeah, can we just schedule it with, so the first meeting in February, we can schedule this and do act?
Right, I think we can do it in five minutes. That's all I was suggesting.
Okay.
All right, well, is there consensus on that? We have Paul, we have Bruce.
Sure, okay.
Okay, we have consensus, so let's, let's do it.
And um, I and I, I'll even motion that we appoint Paul at this point, subject to the vote.
We can't, can't technically do that under the Brown Act, but we'll bring it back and we'll hold you to that motion when we come back.
Okay. So I believe at this point, we skip ahead to North Santa Monica Bay Watershed Council Executive Committee, correct?
Uh, Mayor, if I could jump in on that, um, we spoke with um. Uh, the executive director, at this time, um, that is not any a committee that needs. Uh, that's meeting and does not need any appointees, so you could actually uh take it off our list for now.
Right, and I researched it too and came to the same conclusion. Um. Give me one second, excuse me. I got slightly different lists, I apologize. Okay, um, a couple of these are all already predetermined. LA County City Selection Committees, Mayor, Malibu Public Facilities Authority. Uh, Metro Transit Authority, North County Sector. We already went through the Watershed Council, okay, PCH Task Force. Um. I've been on that, it hasn't met much because of COVID. Uh, met once, I'm pretty passionate about that. I I'd like to keep a spot there. It's pretty infrequent meetings, um. Paul, I mean, uh, Bruce?
Is is this second person on this one an alternate or are there two appointees?
Two people can attend the meeting.
So I I I would like to be on that with you. I'll, I'll volunteer for that one.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Yuri?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um. We have Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee, which is appointed by the CAG, and I was appointed to that already. Um, recently. By the way, the ethics training takes longer than they tell you it will. Um, there is. Room for an alternate if somebody wants to be an alternate on that. It doesn't meet that frequently.
Does this have to be a council member?
These are council appointments, yes.
No, does it have to be a council, like, for example, I see Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy as Pat Healy, who is not a council member, which. I assume is appropriate.
It's an advisory committee, you're right, that's different.
Okay, so this one has to be a council member?
Yeah, it's a full Brown Act body. You have to form seven hundred, the whole bit.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, someone had a hand up, uh, Bruce? I mean, sorry, Paul?
Yeah, I I would be very interested in being part of that group, if it's available.
Okay, we have two people spoken up and, okay, I guess we have a motion and a second to some degree. Um.
May- Mayor, if I could just jump in, the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, both uh the uh. Um, appointee and alternate are actually appointed by the CAG.
Oh, you're right. I'm so sorry. You're absolutely right, and I didn't even have that note there.
So if um, another council member is interested in serving as an alternate, we can certainly let the executive director of the CAG know that. And uh, we can agendize that for the CAG to discuss.
Okay, so that would be Karen that would probably make, bring that forward.
Yeah, I can do that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that. Uh, we have the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Advisory Committee. Oh, sorry, Karen, I'm sorry, I'll try and look up in the middle.
Thanks, I would like to nominate Lloyd Ahern. Uh, if you have seen his application, you understand the depth of his. Knowledge about this entire area and the length of his relationship with. Uh, Joe Edmiston, Director of the Conservancy.
Okay, um, Bruce, I think you're next.
Yeah, yeah. Well, somebody, there's a motion, so maybe somebody should second before we have discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
So.
Yes, Bruce.
All right, so my, the discussion of this is that I I, Pat Healy is currently serving in that position. And I believe she ought to continue to do so. I believe she also is probably one of the most respected locals. Who fights for conservancy and nothing against Lloyd Ahern. But actually, my experience is that he is not a person who fights for conservancy. But in any event, I would, I would prefer to see Pat, so I will be opposed to this motion and hoping that we can then make a motion for Pat.
Um, Steve?
Yeah, I mean, I I kind of, I've known Lloyd and Pat both a long time. Lloyd is. Has his issues with the, the mountain recreation conservancy. And my understanding of that, you know, look, this is an informational process. Where Joe Edmiston runs his meetings, he gets what he wants. This is really a deal. We need somebody on there who understands what's going on and can report back to the community. In terms of actions as Joe's planning on taking, like him buying the land up in Sycamore Park or whatever the hell he's doing in. Uh, Porco Canyon, and I think Pat's a much better person to do that than Lloyd. Because being confrontational in those meetings isn't going to get you anyplace. I've been to a couple of them. It's a, you know, pro forma event, let's just gather the information, bring it back. And once we get it here, we can react to it. That's my perspective.
Okay, I'm, Paul?
Maybe I missed it, but has Pat ever reported to the council on what happens at those meetings?
I I cannot answer that. Um, I do not know.
I did not watch, I never, I.
I believe it would be in the minutes, but uh in the length of time that I've been on the council, I'm quite sure the answer is no.
Yeah.
I mean, Pat, Pat's my neighbor and she's great and um, that, I mean, it sounds like two great candidates. I. I don't, well, we have a motion. Um, let's, let's go roll call and see where we end up.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
No.
Councilmember Yuri?
No.
Mayor Pearson?
Oh, I get to be the the middle vote, huh? You know what? I love Pat and it's great, but it's an interesting point, Pat. I now I need just a few houses up the street here. I I I didn't even remember she was on this committee. Um. Shoot.
Well, why?
Great, would have been a good discussion to have, but um. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote for Lloyd on this time and uh, and I will speak with Pat.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Okay. Um, I think the Trails.
I think it's stag.
Oh, yeah, that's appointed by, by the CAG?
Correct.
Trails Working Group, that's hasn't met in many, many years, as far as I know. I don't even think the Water Education Foundation, does it still exist? Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's, let's leave those vacant.
Okay, then there we go, I think. Oh, yeah, there's even right up here. I think that's, I think we're through it. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're on to seven B. And this is uh, City Council Appointments and City Commissions. Ah, this is me, um. Mayor Pearson make his appointment to the Cultural Arts Commission, um.
Didn't we do these?
My, my um Cultural Arts Commission, the amazing Kathy Eldon, the phenomenal Kathy Eldon. Is uh focusing on an art accelerator for young artists and uh wants to focus her time there. So she has, um, she's been amazing and she will always be amazing and I'm super appreciative. And I'm pleased to appoint Barry Haldeman, who has an incredible career. Um, supporting the arts, representing artists, including his wife. Um, I read his bio, it's so long, it's, it's almost annoying, Barry. It's just an incredible amount of people he's represented across the spectrum. And I think that's what makes a great cultural arts commissioner, somebody who uh can, knows how to build the arts, knows how to support it, has a vision for the arts. So I'm very pleased to make that appointment.
I'll second it.
I don't, I don't know that it's uh something we vote on.
No, you can take that appointment.
Okay, um, if we're done in seven B?
Uh, there's one other thing, Mayor, you, the council had asked us to bring back appointment. Or possible appointment of the exhibition member to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay, I apologize.
Mikey?
Yes, Steve?
Uh, that was my recommendation. The person who wanted that position does not live inside the nine oh two six five area code, so. It's not going to work and I'll withdraw that request.
Oh, I see, they're outside of Malibu so far, it's a different zip code, so they're not even Malibu incorporated.
You know, they, they've lived in Malibu, they've worked in Malibu, but it it does, they don't meet the criteria, so I'm going to withdraw.
Okay, understood. Was there another nomination there? Okay, not seen one. We'll move on to seven C. Seven C, Special City Council Meeting Regarding Homelessness, Mayor Pearson. Um, so clearly, my quick staff report is. I am requesting that um, we do have a special meeting. To try and make serious headway on our homeless situation at a, at a date to. At a date soon, um, and uh. I see hands up. I'm not sure who was first, whoever was first, I guess Bruce, I think maybe you were.
Yes, um, I believe we voted both on January eleventh and again this Monday to combine this with the next item. Um, so they, they both need to be presented. And also, I understand we have many public speakers. Um, and that there's a complete overlap of the people who have signed up to speak on seven C. With those who signed up for seventy, there's more on seventy, but everyone who signed up for seven C is included in the seventy. And I I think we need to figure out whether people get six minutes to speak. Or um, three minutes to speak, because this is an unusual circumstance.
Okay, um, we can explore that, um, yes, Steve?
Mikey, and and I've got no problem with the meeting, but what, what do you want to accomplish during this meeting? What, what is your agenda? What's gonna happen?
I want to, I want to get through that meeting and have concrete steps towards where we're going on on improving our homeless situation.
What does that mean?
Can we, can we have this discussion before public comment?
That's, that's the goal. I'm not, not going into any substance, so let's, yeah, let's hang on a minute.
Let's do public comment. I want to, I just got a couple of comments, Mikey. I'd like to get back, but if they want to do public comments, first let them go do that, please.
Yes, Karen? Here, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I would like to move that we combine uh seven C and D. And have any presentation uh in seven D take place. Uh, at the special meeting on homelessness.
Um, that's what I was hoping would happen too, so we could focus on one subject and be serious about it. And and actually really explore this issue and and make headway, as opposed to chopping it all up.
Mayor Pearson, we still do have to allow public comment on both items.
Understood, understood. So let's get to public comment now and, oh, excuse me? Yeah, I was gonna just try, I heard your, your issue.
No. So, um, you know. Well, yes, it's, it's, it's a different issue, it's related. So um, my understanding of process here is that when a staff item is on the agenda. Irrespective of what we're going to do with it, the staff report is made, then we have public comment, then we have discussion. Um, just as you just started with seven C, you gave your quasi-staff report because it's a council item. And then we were going to have discussion if it wasn't combined, but since it's combined with seventy, there is a presentation. There's a, there's the equivalent of a staff report. Before we have public comment, we ought to present it.
Well, I, okay, let's talk about that. Your staff.
And by the way, and there's, there's well over a hundred written comments. With regard to seven C, with what is now seven D that have been in the record going on a month now. And there are many people who attended the January eleven meeting. Hoping to make or public comment orally and um, on that sec, on that proposal and didn't have an opportunity. And then they were again at the meeting. Monday, and they're again here tonight.
I certainly know that and we need to do a way better job of moving forward so they can be heard. Um, I would just say on the presentation, the presentation you have is an exact copy of what's already in the public.
No, it's not. I I know that for a fact because I prepared them both. If you, if you read it to be exactly the same, you didn't read it very carefully.
It is virtually a twenty-five page PowerPoint of ex, of what your. Proposal that was written as a staff report, there's no difference.
The proposal.
If your plan is to go through the same thing, it's already basically in public for twenty-five. Words-filled pages, we're going to be here for hours.
Okay, well, the, the proposal is actually, I think, a twenty-five page or longer, single-spaced document. And the PowerPoint, you're right, is twenty-five PowerPoint pages, but they're not single-spaced pages like a, like a page of text is.
It's.
So it's a boy, it is a boiled down version. It is the same thing as when our staff on a major item. Has a ten, fifteen, twenty-page PowerPoint, which they present all the time without any objection by anybody. But if you want to cut it off and you don't want the public. But if you want to cut it off and you don't want the public. Can I finish speaking?
Yes.
But if you want to cut it off, even though that's not the way this, this council works procedurally. And you don't want the public to receive the benefit of the report because the public also doesn't read the twenty-five-page proposal necessarily. But if you don't want anyone who has signed up to speak and who's supportive of this proposal and who's going to be looking to what we do on this. To have the benefit of the presentation, I can't stop you from voting to change the process, but I think it would be a mistake.
Karen?
I, I feel that I have to point out, um, this is the third time that many of these agenda items uh, are before us. It certainly would have been my preference to have gotten to them all on January eleventh. We were unable to do that, we were unable to do it this past Monday and here we are again tonight. I will also point out, I think that this subject. Is monumental, not only for our city and for our state, for the entire country. It deserves its own special meeting and, and I don't think. I don't think setting, setting a date. Sometime soon, I hope very soon, to deal with this, this subject. Uh, is doing a disservice to it, if anything, I think it's, it's giving it. The time and attention that it ought to have. And. The, the comment about most community members don't read the report, that's an assumption and I think that's a bad assumption.
Paul, you had your hand up?
I just. Would like very much to uh. To, to. Has any, can anybody remember a staff report being delivered by a council person? Rather than staff? What'd you say, Steve?
You're muted, Steve.
Mikey just delivered one.
My understanding, and I could be wrong, is that Pamela Yulik has done it too. Another lawyer that was on the board, on the council.
Let me, may I, Mikey?
Sure.
Okay, and I would like to hear public comment, but look, I believe. This homeless issue is the biggest issue we've got in front of us. And if you, if you watched any of the comments or the. Next door post, somebody invaded a house up on the west end of Malibu, broke into the house, wouldn't leave. I've had two of those happen in my neighborhood, some, a homeless person broke into Jim Rapp's house and the house across the street.
It's everywhere.
That's everywhere. And the bigger issue is. That. When this mo- rental moratorium gets lifted. Every. Prediction. Says this homeless population is going to explode. And, and if that happens, Malibu is not equipped to handle it. So I am. More than happy to support a meeting. That I think the meeting should be not just more discussion about what we think is going to happen or how, we need. Be able to go to the residents and say, here's what a solution looks like. Here's how it's gonna work. Here are the details of it, so they can go back and, and understand that and give us some comment. If we just sit there and gonna go through commentary, I, I don't think.
Well, we're talking about a different meeting and I don't disagree with you at all and uh. I think we need to show up there seriously and if we're really gonna, if we're all en- engaged in being serious. We need seventy to be. Analyzed by our attorneys for its, its legal basis and none of that process has not happened. So this item is not ready to move forward under normal course of how we do business from everything I can see. And that's, that's, that's gonna delay the process and that really should have been done and should be done, in my opinion. Because it's an important step in how these things work. Um, often items like this too will go to public safety, they'll even go to planning, involves land use. Hasn't had any of that, so um. Just, just some comments, not to get into, I think we need to get to public comment though.
Let me ask one of the.
And then we can come back here.
Let me ask one of the question, Mikey.
Yes.
The city had, we've had a homeless task force since twenty sixteen. The city has poured somewhere close to a million dollars plus into that group. When are we gonna see a plan? When are we gonna see the city's plan? When, when, what timeframe have you given that says this is the date, I want somebody to get off their hands and deliver a plan so we can present it to the public? That's what we gotta do.
That would be this next meeting. There has been a group working on this that I have not been with since they formed. And it is a very difficult issue. I've been involved in homelessness for twenty years. Um, like you, we're all involved in homelessness, which is a big issue. But yes, I agree with you, yes.
We need a solution. We need somebody to come up with a plan and when the, this group that you're talking, when will they?
We're getting into discussion now and we really should hear.
Go ahead, do the comment, but I, we need to have a date when they're gonna come back with a plan.
I will be glad, well, it's gonna be at this next meeting. So. That's why I was calling for the meeting. Um, to see if there was consensus and they're clearly, I've read, everyone's just worried, you know, we all are invested in this very seriously, I believe. Bruce?
Yes, so. There are two issues. That we are going to have to grapple with. With respect to the. Unhoused or homeless or indigent, whatever you want to call this situation. Um, there is the question of how, and they, and they're related. How do we best protect the health, safety and welfare of our community? And, and those individuals are part of our community, but they're, they're a very small part of our community. Our community is ninety-nine percent people who own or rent their properties and live here. And there's the other issue, which is the more global human issue of what, if anything, can we do to help? Um, and they are, although they are related, they also are different issues. And although they are related. One of them is extremely complex, the issue of what can you do to help? Because this is an issue that has plagued mankind for two or three millennia. And the issue of what can we do to help protect the health, safety and welfare of our community, including preventing fires. Three or four of which in the last few months were most likely caused by this situation. Is a today immediate problem that needs to be addressed. And what Steve and I have attempted to do is to tackle a problem that is plaguing our community.
We're, we're going into discussion now, I haven't had public.
No, I, no, I'm talking now about whether we're gonna present it or not, because you apparently don't want it presented until after public comment or at all. And that's the issue that's on the table right now procedurally. And there are, the, the, this community is clamoring for us to provide them with help. With help against health issues, with help against sa- fire safety issues, with help against.
I don't think we disagree.
Crime issues, well, not, we, you, we do disagree because.
Not on these issues.
Let me finish, please. Because the issue of whether we can promptly begin tonight, a discussion of what can be done to help the community, which has already been fleshed out. And yes, it may need to be reviewed by some other people, but it's been fleshed out and we can begin to work on it.
Right from there.
Tonight, it's different, let me finish, please. Can be done tonight, can be begun tonight, and I believe the community expects it to be done tonight. It's a completely different discussion than continuing an ongoing conversation about what can we do in general to help that aspect of the community. So I don't believe that there's a good, solid reason for delaying. A definitive conversation about the health, safety and welfare component. Because we're going to also have another meeting at some other time that's gonna be broad about what we can do to help that aspect of the community. So that's what I have to say about it. Thank you for letting me have the time to speak.
I'm gonna go to public comment now, then we can discuss this afterwards.
We're not gonna have a presentation before the public comment.
Mike?
If I understand that your, your presentation, right, it's a recitation of basically what's already here. And I've never seen a staff presentation, I mean, if you go through that page by page, it's gonna be hours. And it's a wall of words. It's, 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 I mean, it's a wall of words. Is, it's, to me, it's. It's not how it's done, it's not appropriate. There's other ways to do this and um. I am all for. Absolutely dealing with the homeless issue and if there's good ideas in there, let's flush them out a hundred percent. But. Spending the time to go through a twenty-five-page. Report like that. I don't get it.
Okay, well, well, it'll just delay us another moment. I, I would like to have a roll call on whether the council is varying the policy to not have a report before we have public speakers.
My, my preference obviously is to bring it forward at the special meeting to make it a part of our trying to make a decision on what we're doing. And have it sussed out legally in advance, we have more information. And to me, it makes sense. Uh, Karen?
Did I not make that motion? To have this uh. Excuse me, seven. D uh, become part of the special meeting that we need to find a date for.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Councilmember Gressanti already seconded that one.
Let's have a roll call on the motion.
Councilmember Barrett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gressanti?
Paul? Oh, is he frozen? Oh no.
He's seconded it. It's hard to believe he's not a yes.
No, he, I think he lost connection.
Mikey, can, this, what is this, your, the motion mean in terms of what we're gonna do with Bruce's recommendation to see me? Well, how, what, what is, if we vote yes, what, what happens to Bruce's?
We're gonna spend one night going over all of this. Try and make real headway instead of one item that still needs, you know, that I think needs to be gone through the proper channels, right? I'm fun, I'm love that he's concerned with homelessness, I'm not against it at all.
I'm just trying to understand, if we vote yes, what does that mean is going to happen to any?
We have a date certain, um, we can bring Reva back here, we can agree on a date certain.
But does that, what, tonight, does that mean we're not gonna hear anything on Bruce's motion? Or Bruce's recommendation?
Just public comment.
We're gonna hear public speakers. Absolutely.
That's it. I'm just.
That would be my motion so that we, we spend a day on this, yes. Or spend a meeting on this, I apologize. Paul, you were trying to vote and you disappeared. Now you're. Muted. You're muted.
Turn your microphone on, Paul.
How about now?
There we go.
How about now what?
I can, we can hear you now.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, you want roll call again?
Yeah.
Yep, we might as well start again, yes.
Please.
No, it did not go well.
Councilmember Barrett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gressanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
No.
Councilmember Yuri?
No, I'd like to hear at least some discussion of, of Bruce's recommendation, see me.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comment now.
How would you like to handle speakers that have signed up for both seven C and seventy?
It's a great question. Uh, I don't know, that's very common, we've combined items. Um. Reva, do you have experience with items being combined?
I think this can be at the discretion of the council and you could hear everybody who's signed up for seven C and then go to seventy all at once and combine the items, but um. I've gotten that wrong, uh, John, you could jump in.
No, it's perfectly fine what you do.
Okay, let's do that, I guess, and if people are signed up to speak at both, maybe they can. Uh, we can allow them to combine if they feel the need and, and speed things up, so. Is it possible, Heather, to, to tell us people that had signed up for both?
Um.
My question?
What now?
I, I just, am I making things too hard?
Could I? Before Heather answers that, I wonder if we could decide on a, on the process before knowing who they are, because that way it's not like we're doing it on a. Community person, resident by resident. This, we're not using who we know is gonna speak as a basis for deciding what we're gonna do. I have.
Okay, yeah, that's, I, that's not what I meant, that's not what I meant.
Okay, I have a proposal, which is, could, could we agree in our discretion that if anyone has signed up for both motions, we give them four and a half minutes? And if they've signed up for one motion, they get three minutes.
I would agree to that.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll buy that.
So there's consensus. Paul?
Fine with me.
You've got consensus, it's fine with me.
Okay. So let's have our public speakers and if you could identify if they're signed up with both, Heather, that would be um, a miracle. I mean, it'd be wonderful.
Um, that might be a little difficult, so I would actually just suggest um, people who've signed up to speak and if they've signed up for seven C and seventy. That they indicate that before they start speaking and we can adjust their time accordingly.
I think that's a great idea.
Perfect. So the speakers listed for seven C is what we'll go through first. Uh, Howard Redsky, Pamela Conley Yulik, Marissa Coughlin. Rosemary Eyed, Hamish Patterson, Lynn Norton, Bill Sampson, Joe Patterson, Joey Goodman, Scott Dietrich. Joe Drummond, Hamish Patterson. Again, we'll get rid of that one. Lynn Norton and Lori Patterson. So first we'll hear from Howard Redsky.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, good evening again, um. I want to speak on D, so I, I won't even take three minutes, okay? I believe we all want something like this. And I believe the fastest way to get it done and get a major obstacle out of the way is to send a proposal to Coastal. Get their opinion before we spend valuable time and resources and dollars on the item. Because if they don't agree, it won't go anywhere. We have to figure something out with them that they'll agree upon, so we can get this done fast. Because I think everybody wants it. Um, and. The obstacle is them. And then after that, whatever other agencies that the city has to work with. So maybe Bruce, you could negotiate with them something that they agree upon, because I think we all want this. It's just, we want it done in a way that it can actually get done. And we don't spend the little time that the city might have. On other things for this, but it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Next is Pamela Conley, Pamela Conley Yulik. Who I don't actually see in the meeting.
Okay.
So we'll check back on her later.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Marissa Coughlin.
Hello, good evening, council members.
For both items, Marissa? Seven C and seventy.
Oh, she's on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good, because I accidentally muted myself, um, which most people like. Um, I, I'd like to combine, combine and have a special meeting and let me give you a little history. For the past three and a half years, I've been talking to the both the Coastal Commission and different people within the city. I personally interviewed, and this I'm gonna discuss, homeless by circumstance and homeless by choice. Uh, what I found out is the motorhome folks are more homeless by choice. And the people in the tents that push the grocery carts are homeless by circumstance. And that typically has to do with uh, mental issues or drug or alcohol issues that they have. Um, and the consensus for the homeless by choice, one of the gentlemen who lives on the highway. Um, has a Platinum American Express card and every week he goes into B of A, draws a thousand dollars. And used some interesting language on me when I accidentally bumped into him, thanking him for helping the homeless and. His choice of words I won't repeat, but he said he's one of them and he doesn't care what anybody thinks and. And most of the people that I interviewed are um, uh. Need help. The, the ones by circumstance definitely need mental or rehabilitation help. I'm not sure what we're gonna do with the motorhomes. Uh, registry's a joke, they're not gonna ever come to city and register for anything. Um, I've talked to the Coast Commission for over three years about this. And I asked them, when um, I'm asked to have a client who has to give twenty feet of oceanfront away for a. And I asked them, when um, I'm asked to have a client who has to give twenty feet of oceanfront away for a view corridor, why aren't they doing something about the motorhomes? And they said, gee, we don't know what we should do, but we are troubled by it. And I said, it's called Caltrans and it's called the Public Resource Code. And it, and it has to do with uh, uh, day use visitor access to the beaches. Uh, one of the motorhome folks was, um, I was coming out of Malibu seafood. I made an illegal turn. Because he was taking pictures of recently disrobed, uh, little girls had, had come up from Corral Beach. I put my vehicle between the mother's SUV and his RV and told him to give me his camera. He used some choice words on me. So I called nine-one-one, they came, they took the chip out of his camera, gave him his camera back. He has not yet returned and that was a year and a half ago. He's stayed away since that incident. Um, I told the mother never to do that with her kids again, because we don't know if her kids' pictures would be all over the internet. I think this needs a special meeting to interface the two. I don't think it's clear cut. I don't care even about appellate decisions because they don't know, we haven't read the full decisions. I mean, I have. And the, and to Commissioner, I mean, uh, Mr. Silverstein, I've read your document three times and I haven't missed any of the words. Um, I'd like to not take up all of the council time reliving this over and over again. Because to promote the business of the city, many of us have to come to council meetings. For other things and other boards and commissions that we are involved with, and I'd like to keep the agendas going, so we're not here till one in the morning and, and um. Taking up postponing continual things that need immediate attention, fire rebuild situations, occupations, things like that. So I really do uh, encourage the council to uh, have a special homeless meeting, bring all of the factors, the consultants that advise the city, the groups that I've talked to. Um, Mayor Pearson has been very involved, his reputation is clear as to his involvement with the homeless situation. And I would like to have any council member who has people who've had direct contact and interface with these situations. Come to that meeting and make a presentation as well. There are many of us that don't have it. I took it upon myself cuz I wanted to know. Their circumstance, why they were there and why we get, we're getting so many. I work all over the country and it's this way everywhere. And I don't want another situation like our LCP was shoved down our throat cuz we delayed. And the state wrote it for us. I don't wanna have the state write a homeless law for us, so. Uh, we can uh, complete this as soon as possible and emerge special meeting to discuss both issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa.
Next, we have Rosemary Eyed, but I do not see her in the meeting, so we'll move to Hamish Patterson.
Okay.
Good evening, council.
Hey, Hamish.
Hi, um. I, I'm, I'm speaking on uh, both items, so uh, I'll, I'll take my four and a half. Um. So my, my main concern is this. Is I believe that, that, that the usage of the word homeless as an umbrella statement is doing a lot of people a disservice. From what I can tell, there's four distinct groups that are being labeled as homeless under this umbrella. One of them are people that are actually homeless, that are not addicted to drugs, that are not suffering any sort of mental illness, that are, that are legitimate people that are experiencing hard times. The second group is people with drug and alcohol problems. The third group would be people with mental health issues. And the fourth group, which is running cover on this whole thing, is criminal elements. And what I'm concerned about is by using the term homeless to describe three out of the four groups of people. One negates law enforcement for the criminal aspect. Two, negates mental health services for the mental health people and negates the, the, the public health crisis of drug addiction. And then puts the fourth group, which is actual homeless people, in danger because they have to mix with these other three elements. And the way I see it and why the state on, on the bigger picture is using the word homeless is to deny their culpability. And moving the ball away from putting funding into the health crisis that is drug addiction and alcohol, which is mental health isn't it, issues. And from what I can tell, the homeless issue is being used as a boondoggle issue to build infrastructure that doesn't help anybody. Because somebody who's truly on economic hard times and is homeless, needs a facility that doesn't have mentally ill people or drug and alcohol addicts in it. It's not a safe environment for them. They might possibly have kids and they might need to be able to go to work and do these kind of things. And so when I look at this issue, I begin to realize that the drug and alcohol people have been here. Before, for a long time. The mentally unfit people have been here for a long time. This new wave that I've been warning about for a year now of these people that are being displaced by the actions of our state government. Are going to start showing up and these are people that need, are gonna need legitimate services. And not be lumped into people that are drug and alcohol addicts, that are not mentally fit and are not criminals. So when I look at the thing, you, you can, you can talk about the, the Bonzel Creek Day Spa. That gal has been living there in her, her black car for going on five years now. Point PDS, every bush behind the sand dews has someone living in it. There's people living in the bushes on top of Point Doom. There's people all over in the bushes, everywhere. These are, you, I believe you can use criminal laws for, they are trespassing, vandalizing. People living in, in Legacy Park, aren't they vandalizing and, and contaminating the environment? I don't, I, I see a different way to go about it versus lumping them in as homeless. These people are committing criminal acts. By trespassing, but that bumps us into a new thing. We have George Gascon, who was elected as district attorney, who decriminalized trespassing in Los Angeles County. Now we have a situation where people that are, are stealing under a thousand dollars aren't felons. We also have a problem where we live in a city with lack of police enforcement already. We can barely keep the PCH safe as it is. So what I'm saying is, is, is if you're gonna call them homeless, call legitimate homeless people homeless, so that the other people that are, are not by choice homeless can get the services they need, which are mental health. Which are, which are drug and alcohol treatment. And then let's get the criminal element out of here, which are using these crew, these three groups of people as cover to commit crimes in our community. So when I hear the word homeless, I, I really feel that the resources are gonna get poorly used and misplaced. And the people that truly need so, resources of the state and, and the government are not gonna get adequate resources. And, and this is a big problem and, and I think we continually are seeing this, that, that if you call. Excuse me? Oh, that was four and a half?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Hamish.
Next, we have Lynn Norton.
Hi, Lynn. Saw Lynn earlier.
She's there, but um, she's not responding to.
Okay.
Our ask to unmute. Do you want us to move on and come back to her?
Yeah, let's come back to her. She's, maybe she's.
Okay, next is Bill Sampson.
I was set on seven C and seven D. I, I wrote you folks about those two. I, I couldn't figure out from the last meeting whether you combined them or not. I guess you have. So I'll, I'll talk about both of them. Uh, I would agree with um. Hamish, if I'm saying his name right, if I said it wrong, I apologize. Um. He brought to mind, there's a, there's a fifth class, I think. And those would be more along the lines of the guy with the gold card or platinum card in the um. Uh, RV that costs several times more than my house cost. Um, and those people are, if they're homeless, and I thought of doing this, uh, they're living in a five hundred thousand to a million dollar um, piece of moving equipment. Uh, the, the problem is, real homeless is intractable. An awful lot of those people are there. And the biggest source of bankruptcy in the country is uh, medical bills. There are people that are on the edge anyway. Something goes wrong with them. Uh, my wife and I got stuff wrong with us. We're lucky. We, we're pretty well insured, but I, I can see us joining them. Even with uh, our good fortune. So. I, I guess you folks probably tend not to conflate homelessness and campers. Uh, I would urge you not to. Um, it's probably forty years too late to undo the heartlessness of regonomics. We all live on septic systems. We know what trickles down. The discharge of the mentally ill to the streets is something I don't know that the city can do. I wish you the best of luck. I think you all in good faith want to do that. Uh, and I certainly hope you will do it. Whatever you do. Try not to make Malibu more attractive to visitors. We had too many throughout the pandemic, the red tide, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Weekend. It's been nuts. You do have a staff of about a hundred that's pretty well paid. Uh, maybe they can come up with some ideas to keep. I don't know how you make it less attractive. It's a pretty attractive place, otherwise I wouldn't be living here. Then. Along with the error of conflating. Camping and homelessness. I, I've read the Martin opinion. I've read the Martin opinion, uh, Martin versus Boise. Um, including the opinion uh, on the petition for rehearing before the entire Ninth Circuit. The judge that wrote the original opinion, opinion said this, "The city of Boise is quite right about the limited nature of the opinion." On the merits, the opinion holds only that municipal ordinances that criminalize sleeping, sitting, or lying in all public places. When no alternative sleeping space is available, violate the Eighth Amendment. Nothing in the opinion reaches beyond criminalizing the biologically essential need to sleep when there is no available shelter. That's the end of the judge's comments. She wrote the opinion. She should probably be lent some credence by you folks. Parking and camping, as I understand them. May be prohibited without running afoul of the holding in Martin. We seem to be afraid of prohibiting camping. It's a different issue than the poor folks that are having to live in, have to live in their cars. Or are simply too sick. I can't fix the national problem uh, of mental illness. Uh, I'm not sure anybody, I'm not, I don't know if anyone can. It, it's gonna take a lot of resources. But don't confuse the campers and the homeless people. And I'll go along with Hamish's other four categories uh, also. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next one here from Bill Patterson.
You got something else on there, Joe? Maybe a TV or something. I'm not sure what.
I apologize for that. Okay, I'm back. Patterson, I signed up for both uh, seven C and seven D, I believe. So first, uh, to start on seven C, you know, I, I really believe that um. I'm sorry, first I wanted to say, I'm just, I'm really disgusted by. The continued stonewalling of Councilman Silverstein. By three members of our council right now. It's just really, it's not a good look and it's, it disgusts me. That being said, seven C homelessness in Malibu, it's a. It's a big issue, as everybody says, it's an issue statewide, countywide, countrywide and worldwide. And it's something that needs to be addressed and I, I fully support a special meeting. Um, as many as meetings, special meetings it's gonna take to address this issue in our city. I have a lot of empathy for homeless. I volunteered for homeless organizations uh, for the last fifteen years with my time and my money. You know, and I feel the way that it's being handled currently um, uh, in the larger area in LA County. Uh, is just, it's atrocious. Um, I own property in the San Fernando Valley, commercial property. Every day when I go into my office, I drive by twenty motorhomes. I'm one of the major thoroughfares through the San Fernando Valley. That are just falling apart, literally falling apart on the curbsides. And I think about those people tonight as it's raining. You know, in the situations that they're in. Um, you know, but I blame that on our county and the city of Los Angeles and, and the way they've handled this, which is ignoring it. And, and using the guise of empathy and like, like let them be and like, leave them alone. Um, it's just, it's terrible. My wife has a lot more to say about this issue on seven C, so I'll, I'll defer to her. And I'll move on to uh, to the next. Malibu Municipal Code nine point zero eight point nine zero was adopted by the city nearly twenty years ago. We all see the signs posted when we enter the city from the north, south, east and west. They state the following, "No overnight camping in vehicles within city limits except in designated campgrounds, MMC nine point zero eight point zero nine zero." In red lettering and on a white background. It seems like pretty clear and simple language, and yet for the last two years at least, the past council has refused to enforce this Malibu ordinance. Using the Boise excuse, AKA the Boise decision, as justification for their failure to enforce the ordinance as it is written. The past council has neglected to protect the health, welfare and safety of the residents who elected them and those who didn't. The Boise decision was very narrow in scope admittedly by the judge. Who wrote it and was not intended to hamstring municipalities from protecting their, their housed citizens' health, welfare and safety. I'm not an attorney, however, the language in the decision, which I have read several times, is very clear and specific. If the city is being advised otherwise, then I suggest it's time to seek new representation or council, and that's council with an E. Nonetheless, if this, if it is our city's position that our municipal code is unenforceable, then it's time to amend that code so that it is. Enforceable. I believe the amendment seven D put forward by Councilmember Silverstein and Yurin goes a long way towards making the municipal code more robust, concise and enforceable. This amendment will go a long way toward protecting the health, safety and welfare of the residents of Malibu, AKA your constituents. I implore you to put aside your personal differences and for once, under this newly installed council, do what's right for the residents of Malibu and adopt this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Next would be Joey Goodman, but I don't. So we'll move on to Scott Dietrich.
Thank you. Um, I have signed up for both. So starting with, I think it's seven D, no parking. Um, I'd like to piggyback on what Joe said. I don't know why the current ordinance, which is very clear, has not been enforced. We're told it's unenforceable. But it seems like nothing gets enforced in the city, so I guess that doesn't surprise us. So yeah, let's pass this new ordinance. Maybe it'll give us a shot. We need it. We've got to enforce it because yes, you can put parking signs on P H, PCH. And where people, they're gonna go in the canyons and they're gonna burn it down. Oh, and speaking of burning it down, um. We can't allow our empathy for those who are homeless to destroy our neighborhoods, houses, the environment with more fires. It's time to end that as well. Um, I absolutely, Mikey, support your idea of having homeless meetings. And as I think Hamish said, like, yeah, let's get some solutions on this. We need solutions. Yes, we empathize with those who have lost a job, who because of health can't work, but that's not most of what we're dealing with. These people are choosing. But that's not most of what we're dealing with. These people are choosing to live either in a motor home or to camp out. I mean, why wouldn't you? You know, if, because we don't enforce the Airbnb thing either. Maybe I should rent my house out for an Airbnb, make it a party house, make a lot of money, and buy one of those five hundred thousand dollar motorhomes on the beach. And some people are doing that. But it's a great place to camp out. And they medicate themselves with drugs and alcohol. We can't fix the mental health aspect. But we can make certain that it doesn't ruin our city. So thank you. Yes, pass the new ordinance for no camping, no parking. And let's have a homeless meeting, but with some specific ideas on what we can do to fix things. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Next one here from Joe Drummond.
Okay.
Hi there.
Hi, Joe, I can hear you.
Oh, great. I actually signed up for both as well, although I don't think I'll be that long. So for item seven C, I'm here to support Mayor Mikey's recommended action to schedule a special city council meeting to discuss homelessness issues and solutions. Homeless encampments are a big issue for we residents in Big Rock after having three fires set by them about a month and a half ago in Tuna Canyon, right above PCH, where the fires raged and closed the highway for the day. A long-term solution is necessary for the homeless, yet Malibu is too wild and wildfire prone to house them in our wilderness. The health and safety of the citizens of Malibu do need to come first, so something needs to be reconciled about the homeless people living here. A civilized, yet civil solution to keep all we residents safe and healthy. Having the community bring solutions in a forum like this is what we need city council to hear and act upon. There are less risky locations where help can be administered, but Malibu may not be the place with the homeless camps proximity to our wildfire prone area, which they have and will continue to ignite, simply threatens making our own neighbors homeless. I actually agree with Hamish on his point of getting rid of the criminal element of the homeless and getting treatment for the mentally ill and drug and alcohol abuse victims and aid to those who have just hit a rough patch like Bill Sanson spoke on, those who had medical bills bankrupt them, et cetera. And then with regards to seven E, I'm speaking to express my support for the amended no camping ordinance proposed by Councilmember Silverstein and co-sponsored by Councilmember Euring. Again, we residents of Malibu want to reduce or eliminate the long line of recreational vehicles and other vehicles that reside on PCH indefinitely and other locations within the city of Malibu. We see this on a daily basis near our home in Big Rock. It is a health hazard and should be, we need to evacuate for any reason. They will cause a massive and most hazardous delay, especially during a fire. Again, the three fires were set in the hillside at a homeless encampment right above PCH. Some of these folks could be sleeping in their vehicles along PCH, and it should not be allowed. They are threatening our communities and are a danger not only to themselves, but to us residents of Big Rock and Malibu. We ourselves do not want to be made homeless from their actions that are not enforced upon. The proposed co-sponsored ordinance appears to be the first effort on behalf of the city to address and enforce the issues of vehicle camping and dangers posed by an unregulated unhoused population in Malibu. A proposal of this sort has been long overdue and it's a welcome development in Malibu. So I encourage you to give the proposal serious consideration and to adopt the proposal to some variation of it as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Next we'll hear from Lori Patterson.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, Lori.
Hi, I was signed up to speak on both issues. I do agree with my husband's feeling of disgust at the treatment and stonewalling of elected Councilman Bruce Silverstein. That being said, I'm also very glad a special meeting is on the books to discuss the larger issue of the homeless in Malibu. However, I believe the first order of business at that meeting should be to discuss a plan of how to provide the necessary services to a homeless population with a shelter here, which would include mental health services, addiction counseling, physical health services, adequate police protection for the community, fire protection, and a plan for the ordinances and laws that would govern a shelter, i.e. drug and alcohol usage policies, who's actually eligible and who is not, the number of begs legally required based on the population of Malibu, if we assume, which I don't, that a shelter is legally required within our city limits to satisfy the Boise decision. After that extensive business plan and only after that plan is presented to the residents of Malibu, should you even consider the location and size of a proposed shelter facility, which should then only be approved through a special election voted on by the residents of Malibu, not a unilateral decision by city council. This would apply to safe parking as well. Since we already have had to make it perfectly clear that Malibu residents do not want a safe parking lot at Zuma, and the mere suggestion of it by city staff made it clear how out of touch they are with the desire of Malibu residents. It's as if City Hall has forgotten they represent the taxpaying residents of Malibu, not the homeless on our city streets. I'd also suggest you get advice from a law firm, obviously not the one we have now, to interpret correctly the Boise decision and its narrow scope of how it may or may not apply here. City Hall has been able to misinterpret the letter of the law as an excuse for not enforcing our laws and ordinances long enough due to the misinterpretation of it by the past attorney, her law firm also, which continues to incorrectly advise city council to this day and is used incorrectly as an excuse for why they can't do anything, tying the hands of law enforcement erroneously. Onto the camping ordinance. First and foremost, I really hope Mikey, Karen, and Paul do not summarily vote down this proposal just simply because it was written by Bruce Silverstein. Your personal issues, palpable hatred and disdain, the three of you seem to have no problem conveying at these council meetings since his election, has got to stop. This is about the well-being and safety of the residents of Malibu. It's not about your personal feelings about each other. If your belief is that the current no camping, no overnight parking ordinance that has been on the books for almost two decades, all of a sudden cannot be enforced, then we must amend it to the point where it can be enforced. Do not just, as you have done, raise your hands and tie the hands of law enforcement, saying we can do nothing due to the fact that you refuse to do something. A lawyer, a city council member, has handed you a blueprint on how to legally get this ordinance enforceable, and you owe it to the taxpaying residents of Malibu to get it done. The RVs have taken over and taken advantage of our city long enough. We demand our city streets back and we demand the ability for day tourists who spend tax dollars here fair access to the beach, which has been taken away from them by the Coastal Commission, the huge RVs taking up all the parking, and this city council. One question for the Coastal Commission would be, why does anyone need beach access at night when our beaches are closed after sundown? They must be challenged by City Hall on that point as well as many other points. Lately, you've done a great job getting rid of a lot of the RVs, but please, keep going. The stubborn ones gaming the system are simply not moving and they're not going away. They move a little and then they stay. We need to make it clear that Malibu is no longer handing out oceanfront views for free for RV living. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
I now see Rosemary Ide, I believe, in the meeting, so if you can try her.
Okay, great.
Okay. Now, this is Rosemary Ide, and I live on Big Rock. And I'm also supporting no camping in the hills and the parks. Joe Drummond talked about it. I agree. We don't need fires coming from some camping, some encampment. And the homeless issue, I put everything in one pile. The homeless issue is really kind of a disgrace. There are several reasons for it. It's in the drug use, it's free needles, free drugs, everything is free. Minimum wage is going to go up. People don't have to work anymore. If you're homeless and you're ill, you should be taken care of, but not live in an encampment on PCH and walk around high and maybe endanger people. This is not a very good situation. And it used to be so much better decades ago. And I don't know what the city and of course the state lost. I don't think all the states have this policy, free drugs, free needles, free everything. We got to maybe change that. So anyway, I hope you can find some solution. And we have to help the homeless who happen to be not continuously homeless, but who still want to work. And we could have them work at the labor center if they want to work. But nowadays, it seems no one wants to work anymore because everything is free anyway. But anyway, I think there's not much more to say from my side.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Rosemary.
And let's try Lynn Norton again.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Lynn.
Hi. So I'm frustrated that you made a motion before hearing public comments because to me, that's like saying nothing that the public had to say could have influenced your thinking about what to do. Because I think that, you know, we came here tonight and one of the things on the agenda was the no camping ordinance. And if you came unprepared, I mean, if you wanted to vote no on it, you could vote no. But if you came unprepared to vote on it, it's kind of like we're spending the whole meeting talking about something that you're not going to progress. If I understand that, you're not going to progress on that evening, on that issue tonight. And what I'd like to know is, how do you expect to be more informed by the next meeting in terms of voting on that no camping ordinance, if you're not, if you don't have enough information to vote on it tonight? So one thing that I think is, I mean, it's going to solve something, it's not going to solve homelessness, but it's going to help, as I understand, with the camping issue. So for example, if the, if a sheriff comes across somebody who's sleeping on public property in a vehicle and the sheriff knows that he must allow that person to stay if they're homeless and he can evict them if they're not homeless, then the permit makes sense to me. It's not something I would have ever thought of, but if a person can show a permit to say that they're legally allowed to stay there because they're homeless, then the sheriff can deal with that right on the spot. But if there isn't anything like that, then the sheriff can't possibly sort out on the fly who is allowed to stay and therefore everyone's allowed to stay. So I mean, that's my understanding of it. So I think that it doesn't need to be so, I mean, I would do a much simpler version than what was proposed in the full ordinance that Bruce wrote. And just even to have the permit process and then only evict people who are not homeless. And also, like I've written to you about, by the way, I signed up on both meetings, I can't see my timer anywhere.
You have two and a half minutes.
Okay, because it was four and a half, right?
Yeah.
I the thing that I've written to you guys about is that we need data. I mean, I'm not clear what the goal of the special meeting is. And I think that it needs to be really specific, not that we just go in fifteen directions and talk about everything related to homelessness. And what I think the goal needs to be is that it's time to strategize how to get a roof over the heads of people who are living unhoused in Malibu. And that might be temporary shelter, it might be permanent housing, or it might be that some of those people just don't belong in Malibu because they, you know, never were residents of Malibu or a part of Malibu. But I think that it has to be about that. I know the city's made a lot of efforts in other ways in terms of feeding people and dealing with people who are still homeless, but I think the idea is to not have, right, people living outside unhoused. And I think that it would really help to have that permit process in the ordinance because you could gather data that you really need. Like I learned once about a woman who had worked at Malibu High School and when her husband died, she started living in her car. And somebody in that situation, I'm sure that we're going to want a whole different solution for, you know, in terms of finding housing for that person than somebody who just came to Malibu as a homeless person and decided to, you know, take up residency there. So with regards to the meeting, I really hope that before tonight is over, that you will declare what is the goal of that meeting? And it's not just going to be to, you know, just, you know, spray a lot of information at people because that's something we can do offline, you know. And I thought it should be a town hall meeting because it really involves a lot of citizen participation. So anyway, I wish that tonight you would actually go forward with a really trimmed down version of the of the no camping ordinance, which is just to have a permit process, you know, just to get that started. But not to do anything that you have to even worry about Martin Boise, because if you're not evicting anybody, then you don't have to worry about that. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Lynn.
Okay, we've had one more speaker sign up since we started this. And I believe we also have Lieutenant Braden available to speak.
Okay, let's hear them both.
Finally, we'll hear from Kirk Hill, and then we'll move on to Jim.
Hey, hi, good evening, everybody. As a planning commissioner, I'm not going to get into this now because I may be hearing something about this. But I just wanted to point out what I haven't heard from anybody else, just as an observation. There was a letter floating around in the internet from Captain Chuck Becerra, who was very, seemed very excited to have this, to have something to enforce. Sounds like they're behind it. So if you've got the sheriff already lined up to do this, that seems like something you'd want to work with. And I'm glad you're being, I'm being followed by Jim Braden because I'm sure he can be more specific about that. But I just wanted to point out that one thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Jim.
Hang on one minute. Okay, so I want to comment on a few things. And I haven't spoken in a while, so Happy New Year to everybody in Malibu. Congratulations to all the new council members. The, I'll comment on a few things. One, when they keep pushing back to the city of Malibu said to not enforce this camping thing. I've been around Malibu working in different capacities for the last twenty plus years. The deputies, especially on the early morning shift, for years cited people for camping. It was enforceable to us. There was no sleeping in your car. That was also enforced. It kept the highway very clear of people. When the Martin versus Boise decision came out, the county of Los Angeles, the district attorney's office is the one that refused to allow us to cite people for that anymore. So let's have that clear. Don't push it back on the city. Anything we enforce, it's going to go to the district attorney's office. And for that enforcement to work, a plan would have to be that if we're out there doing something, that they're actually going to file the case against the person. That's a very important component here. All through the year, all over the country, policing is being questioned for constitutionality, in fairness and enforcement. And it's not just on a racial basis. There's an economic basis, and I agree with all the different layers of homelessness that he brought up is a very true thing. There is people that have medical issues, all kinds of things. The comment from like Scott Dietrich that no enforcement goes on in Malibu, I highly, highly disagree with. On the watch commander at Malibu Station, which is located in Lost Hills, I deal with the people that they bring out of Malibu. There is absolutely a drug problem in Malibu with methamphetamine and all different kinds of things. And there's people with psychosis, a lot of it is drug induced. I deal with those people. So when he says there's no enforcement, no, I had problems with three or four people in cells at Lost Hills last week that we had to deal with. It's a crisis. Our hands are tied in a lot of different ways. But let's make something clear also. When people say, oh, nothing's being done, I would highly, highly differ. I've been working early morning shift for the last nine months, I'm back on days now. But in that nine months, you should be happy to know that you have several young deputies, and some of these are very young deputies, that are highly, highly active in the nighttime hours in Malibu and the county areas. And let's not forget, the city, the city council, the Public Safety Commission, we sat on those things, we discussed what we could do about this. That signage along PCH came with the work of all those people. And that signage along PCH, I can tell you firsthand, has And that signage along PCH, I can tell you firsthand, has been highly, highly effective. Is it the answer? No, we need to continue with things. But for us to do enforcement, we have to have something that they view as constitutional for us to have a legal standing to do. It's the most important component there, most important. So just like Bruce's idea, there is lots of positive points in it. And Chuck Becerra and I have both reviewed it. Is it, is it perfect in its form? No, I would say it needs tweaking in different ways. But is it a start? I agree with the other residents that said, we need some plan in place. But that plan, just like Amos brought up, all those different layers, that mentally ill person is not coming to get a permit. And same with the person with the addiction issues and everything else. And the county council did review Bruce's say. But the comment is on it, from a legal standing, from a police officer's point of view. Do I have legal standing because someone doesn't have a ticket to sleep there? Their comment is, that doesn't make him any less homeless. In my world of 30 years of policing, that doesn't give me a firm standing to take action with that person. I'm, I, I, this is a crisis. I wish we could go back to enforcing both of those rules. It was highly effective in Malibu. I wish we could put signs up. I totally agree. I forget her name, but she commented on day use at the beach. I wish there were signs all along PCH that referred to that. And I could have all my young bucks and males and female deputies go out there in the evening hours and run these people off every night. And in the last month, those deputies, along with the VOPs, have been going out on a nightly basis with the deputies in your other VOPs, which are volunteers. They called me and asked, is it okay if we come out there? I was kind of surprised, but these guys have done a tremendous effort to help the deputies. And I created a cohesiveness between those VOPs and the deputies so they could enforce this. Is it perfect? No. Do the deputies get occupied doing other things? Yes, absolutely. Our whole job is a prioritization. When emergencies come, that's what's handled. But the comment of nothing, nothing gets enforced in Malibu, that's a very untrue statement. I heard the same thing someone commented when I was on the PCH task force. There's a, somebody else commented on the different dynamics that's happened during the pandemic, all these different people coming to Malibu. I've seen that myself. It's created a whole different dynamic. All last summer, we were, we were from about March on, we were up and down with different things, closing the beach, opening the beach, different car groups coming through, a lot of different things being addressed. And we did it with basically the same resources we normally have. So I myself watch what the deputies do. They do a tremendous job. Do we have a crisis? There's a crisis all over the country. We need to, just like Bruce, I compliment Bruce on his effort. I do. It's a very important thing, very important. But it's also in, just like the one meeting, it got a little heated and everything else. No, we all need to cool down. Nothing happens in that environment. I've been in policing 30 years. Guess what? That's all we handle. That's when we intercede into things, when people's emotions get carried away. But there's no effective communication in that. So we all need to focus on the big picture. We've had a cleaner Malibu where we didn't have all this. We need to create a environment where we can help some people, the ones that need it, and move along to other ones that don't belong here. And all those layers of people, it's a very complex issue, but we absolutely, I agree with. It's not just discussion, we need a plan to go into place. That assists us in doing our job. And it has to be something that's constitutional, that when I send a deputy out, that if the person doesn't do what I say, that I have total legal standing to put my hands on that person. That's what's being questioned all over the country with policing. So this is a very important issue. So with that, I'm going to wrap it up. But I'm available. I'll give out my email. If anybody wants to email me and discuss any of these things, I'd be welcome to read your emails. And it's j r braden at l a s d dot org. And I wish you all Happy New Year. I hope we move on from this pandemic, that we get back to a more normalcy and that we address these issues that challenge the country, actually. So I'll wrap it up with that.
Jim, I want to thank you very much for taking the time to share your feelings with us. That was a perfect way to close out the public speakers. Very informative and I think very needed. Thank you very much. I want to thank all the speakers. I thought everyone had great input and I really appreciate people taking the time to share on this.
Mikey?
Yes.
Can I interject just real quick?
Of course.
We do have, we do have eight speakers that didn't sign up for, that are signed up for 7D. Would you like to hear them now or would you like?
No, 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 yeah, it's a combined thing. So I thank you for catching that for me. It all kind of blended together there for a minute. So absolutely, let's get to the other speakers, 100%.
Okay. And so we have first Doug Stewart and we'll hear, I don't think she's in the meeting yet or again, Pamela Conley Yulik, John Stockwell, Gary Hoffman, Georgia Goldfarb, Ryan Embry, and we'll try Joey Goodman again. So first is Doug Stewart.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, good evening, council members. I'm speaking tonight against this proposal 7D, not because I don't want PCH parking problems cleaned up, nor is it because I don't want the homeless problem cleaned up. Quite the contrary. The city staff and other government agencies, as well as other Malibu residents and I, have been diligently promoting the efforts to correct these exact issues for quite some time. In my opinion, this entire proposal is just political grandstanding by the two new council members as it's both factually incorrect and factually unsupported. Plus, if it were to pass, it would most likely make homeless problems far worse in the city. You have to presume the real intention here is to make the title attractive to people who really don't know what's in the proposal versus the real facts. For example, the first part of the proposal's title is, reduce overnight parking on PCH. Talk about being late to the party. The proposer's own next door photo of offensive RV parking on Corral Beach was from before the city ordinances cleared them out. Ordinance number 460 from January 2020 and 469 from September were already used to clear the offensive parking on Las Tunas, plus the section east of the pier, Corral Beach and Zuma. Another ordinance was recently recommended by the Public Safety Commission to clear Blocker Beach and Trancas to Broad Beach Road. Plus ordinance number 427 from December 2017 was granted a coastal permit on January 19th by the 5-0 vote of the planning commission to clear oversized vehicles and trailers of all types from offensive parking anywhere in the city. For the homeless proposal, the proposals probably, the proposers probably know that simply complying with the requirements of the Boise decision will allow the city and sheriff to enforce the existing no camping laws and proactively assist the homeless to a possible better outcome. Laguna Beach, for example, has done just that. Rather than try to outlawry the US Supreme Court, just allow a temporary overnight homeless sleeping center, known as an alternative sleeping location for as few as five to 10 beds. One eye opener in their proposal is it promotes the likely turning of city properties such as the Chili Cookoff site into a possible skid row, plus giving homeless parking permits anywhere in the city up to 25 or more vehicles a night. Now that the two new city council members are on record as being in favor of such extreme measures, perhaps they will support the homeless efforts by the city council that were in process in January 2020 that have been suspended due to COVID and a proposed special council meeting on homelessness. Those solutions are actually intended to both lower the homeless population and provide a humane as possible outcome for these people. For these reasons, further described in my letter to the city council, I urge you to vote against this proposal 7D. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug.
And I actually cut off the top of that list. We did have Mark Bowdy listed before Doug, so we'll go back to him.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Mark.
Okay, thank you, by the way. And boy, the sheriff, he nailed it. And Bruce, this may surprise you, but I do want to compliment you on a, a good first draft. But let me say this. I've got clients who are dealing with homeless near downtown LA in luxury hotels in San Pedro. I've owned properties in Los Angeles, Los Feliz, West Hollywood, Inglewood, West Adams, places where the homeless problem is 10 times what it is in Malibu. Trust me when I tell you this, you're not going to face a massive influx after the eviction moratorium is lifted. It's not going to happen. Three minutes isn't enough to tell you why. Let me frame it this way. And yes, 7D does need to be voted down tonight. It is illegal and unenforceable. But Bruce, you don't need to worry and you don't need to be in a rush because some portions of 7D that are legal can be revisited and they should not be tacked on to the back end of a no camping ordinance. The cities that are winning the competition here, and this may seem strange to all of you. You are in a competition against other cities to attract and retain the best homeless. That's how you win this. That's how you keep the good working people who are homeless, who may live in an RV. And that problem is never going to go away and Malibu will not be able to solve it. The trick here, if you want to be able to get rid of the criminals, the meth addicts and the people who set fires, is to demonstrate that you've come up with a solution on some of the, in all likelihood, on some of the property that is owned by the city, but you know, off civic center way. The movie you should watch on this, and it's a book as well, that will give you the best sense of which homeless you are seeking to attract and retain as a matter of compassion and lawfulness is Nomadland. Either read the book or watch the movie before the next meeting. Also, I think your regional housing needs assessment is up. Kristi Hogan did a fantastic job on the one that was crafted in 2013. Those only last for eight years. I believe you have to submit another one to Sacramento. This is a dual issue, by which I mean you're dealing with both affordable housing and homelessness. Your ordinance, which should be a standalone ordinance on this, and it should not be tacked on to something that will attract the attention of groups that want to sue you. Believe me when I say this, I've sued the federal government, the county sheriff, the Los Angeles PD, the state of California. And I've taken money from all of them. You do not want to pass this. You want to vote it down tonight. It was drafted by two white men over 50 who live above PCH. Homeless advocates, look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
And then for the rest of the speakers, I believe we only have Georgia Goldfarb.
Okay, then we can circle back and see if anyone else shows up.
Yeah.
Thank you. You there, Georgia? See you, you're muted.
I don't know if it's her or Walter that was going to.
Oh wait, no, she's unmuted now.
I'm okay now. This is, I just wanted to read Georgia's statements. She unfortunately had to leave and she said she should be waiting two or three meetings to get this in.
I understand.
Thank you. Dear council members, I support item 7D. Unfortunately, given the very significant risk of wildfire related to camping and the condition of our chaperone habitat, which is dry, I cannot support any use of fire, fireworks or camping. There have been at least three fires started by people camping next to the road near Big Rock. In regard to vehicles parked perpetually on PCH, the risk of using fire or fire itself started by vehicles is also present. Further, if there were another wildfire or an emergency event, our ability to evacuate may well be significantly compromised by these vehicles. There are solutions to unhoused people. PathwaysHousingFirst.org is a best practice solution. I'm fairly certain that its director, Sam Simbaris, would be happy to discuss their program with city officials. His study in the 1980s in a randomized controlled trial demonstrated that even among the chronically homeless with mental disabilities, the housing retention rate could be 85%. Several counties in US cities have adopted this program. While this is a regional, state and national problem, we should nonetheless initiate a more effective program in Malibu. Thank you, George Goldfarb, Big Rock. Thanks for letting me do this.
Yeah, thanks for having it.
Okay, um, yeah. Um, we have, one second here. I don't see Pamela Conley Yulik, John Stockwell, Gary Hoffman, Ryan Embry or Joey Goodman.
I don't either.
Yeah. So that concludes comment for 7C and 7D.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're, we're back here, like the dais, it doesn't feel right. We're back here sitting at home on Zoom. Let me, let me, let me give a stab at this, Bruce. My motion would be that we take your proposal and run it through for a legal analysis. So I mean, I think some people said it perfectly. I think Jim said it perfectly. It's a start, but there's a process we have to follow. I certainly don't personally believe we would just, on any, anything like this, we would just unilaterally approve it without taking the proper steps. That's my opinion and I would make a motion to have it analyzed. So yeah, what, I mean, we all share the same goal. And it's a difficult, difficult goal, we know that. And I do applaud you, like others people spoke about taking it seriously. And I appreciate that, I really do. And that would be the next step that I see makes perfect sense. Steve? Oh, you're muted.
My concern is, how soon do you want to get that done? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm moving, here's, here's where I, I have no idea what the city's going to do with the homeless situation. I mean, you want to have a meeting. I'd like to know for that meeting, who from the city is going to present, who is tasked from the city to present a complete plan of what the city wants to do? And when are we going to see that? We need, we need time for, you know, it's like, in, in the business world that I came from, you said, I want to get this done. You've got 30 days to do it. Come back with a plan. Versus leading this open ended where we never get any place. We got to.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you. And we do have to allow the public to speak too.
Give me the timeframes you're looking at.
I would like to ask Reba to find us a date certain and in the next just few weeks. And to bring it forward and certainly to have Bruce's proposal as part of it and analyze, to have the homeless working groups, what they've been working on, brought forward as well. And that's a group of citizens and run oversaw overseen by Susan Duane's. And to have, I would think we'd be smart to have other like Jim tonight, have other outside speakers come in. Because I think sometimes that they end the day. It isn't who's right, hang on, let me give it a stab here. It isn't who's right or wrong on, on Martin versus Boise. It's like Jim said, it's, it's no point in doing something that can't be enforced, that doesn't achieve our goals. I think that's really, really important.
So who from your perspective is tasked from the city to deliver a detailed plan of what our homeless solution is going to be? Who's tasked to do that?
At the moment, that'd be Susan Duane's.
Okay, and, and we want her plan to show up when?
Before the meeting, we can lay out what that looks like, absolutely.
Okay, so.
If I could jump in for one moment, just to provide a little clarity. Last year before the pandemic shut everything down, the city did hold a special town hall meeting to discuss. to discuss, um, the issues surrounding, uh, individuals who are homeless. And the council did provide this, uh, staff with direction. Um, sorry to have it right in front of me, but off the top of my head, um, it was to explore, um, area properties for a shelter, um, including the courthouse. It was to look at properties that could accommodate a safe parking program and to look at some examples that are being done in other cities, including, I think it was San Clemente and Laguna Beach off the top of my head. Um, and so follow the direction that was provided to us from the council at that time. Uh, you know, we have been prepared to return with that information, um, in a written and verbal report for the council. So, um, that was kind of where it was left. Obviously, there are new issues that have come up, and we can certainly um, do our best to address that. So, um, I look to John to make sure that we're not taking direction uh, that's outside of what's on the agenda for tonight. But that was the last time that we discussed this matter, and it was obviously put on hold due to COVID.
Mikey?
Uh, yes.
I'd like to go back. Look, here, here's my concern. I believe, despite what some other speakers have said, that when this rental moratorium gets lifted, we could get buried homeless. I don't want to be behind that curve. Okay, I don't think anybody know. So we've got to come up with a solution or a plan of what we're gonna do. Bruce has given us one version, right? You may like it, you may not like it. If there's another version the city has, let's get it detailed. But we need something, we can go to the residents and say, here's what it's gonna look like. Here's where the homeless shelter may be. Here, here are the steps we're going to take, and someone's got to do that. And I just want to make sure if we're gonna have this homeless meeting, that we will provide the residents with enough detail that they can go home at night and say, yeah, I agree with this. I disagree with this. I think there's a better way to do it, but we gotta move it forward. I don't want to spend seven years like we did on short-term rentals and walk away with nothing.
Well, let's not do that. I agree with you 100%. Um, I'm glad to hear it. And I couldn't agree more. Paul?
I was, I was encouraged by the words of Jim Braden and a couple of the other attorneys who said that there are parts in this that are definitely usable, which is great. And I'm wondering if Bruce is could meet with somebody at Coastal Commission? And also, have you, I know that you reached out to other municipalities. Have you gotten any positive feedback yet or changes that might be made? And I was also encouraged to hear that County Council has seen it. Have they given you any comments yet?
I, I'd like to talk about that. Cool. I have a lot of things. I, I, I have a number of things I want to talk about. And, you know, and Malibu Times can write about how I wasted everyone's time talking, and that's fine. Um, to answer your direct question, Paul, to answer your direct question, Paul, the County Council refuses to speak with me. Um, I sent this to, I, this was sent to them, and a junior attorney there, not, not, not someone who hasn't practiced very long, but someone who's down in the food chain, um, responded to me that he's not allowed to give legal advice to anyone but his client, which I've never, ever gotten a response like that from any attorney anywhere when someone wanted to talk to them about an issue. But I, I dutifully followed up to try to speak to the County Council, and they refused to speak with me. I then, I sent an email to the Chief County Council. No response. Now, this, this feeds in perfectly to something I was gonna start off by saying. I mean, first of all, I, I don't believe for a minute, like some speaker said, that the city is purposefully not enforcing something to avoid enforcement. It's never been my belief. This, I don't, I don't believe the city just avoids enforcement for the sake of avoiding enforcement because it's tough to do. So I'll, I'll take that off the table. That's not one of, that's not a motivation or a belief of mine. The Martin decision is being used by politicians at the county to pursue a political agenda that is not related to what the opinion says. There's no question about it. There is a constitutional ruling, which is extremely narrow, and there is an agenda, and it's, and it's very, it permeates what we've been listening to tonight as well. There are people who want to solve the homeless problem. There are people who want to do what they can, and it's admirable for the homeless population. And they're utilizing a misconstruction, a purposeful misconstruction of a very narrow decision. And by the way, whoever said Supreme Court, oh, I think it was Doug. I'll get Doug later. Not a Supreme Court decision, Ninth Circuit opinion. They're purposefully misconstruing this Ninth Circuit opinion to pursue a political agenda that will force the creation of shelters, force the creation of safe parking areas, force the creation of other benefits for the homeless. And as Hamish said, and, you know, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but there actually, there's a lot of literature about the fact that it's all a giant financial boondoggle because it's inherently, at the end of the day, insolvable problem at which billions of dollars are being thrown. But even if that's not the case, it is a problem that has plagued mankind. And we talked about, there, there were people talking about various kind reasons for homelessness. Drug addiction, alcoholism, mental illness make up a huge part of this. And it is beyond dispute, beyond dispute that someone who is in their addiction, alcoholism, substance addiction, they cannot be helped unless they want the help. They need to initiate the desire for that help. Offering them things that make their life easier will guarantee that they will take those things, but it also guarantees they will not get better because they didn't come for help, they came for things. They didn't come to get off their substance abuse or their alcoholism. They came to get a meal, or they came to get a cot. And you're enabling them when you do that because it feels good. It feels like you're doing something to help someone. You're hurting them. You're making it more likely that they will never achieve recovery. There are some who will never achieve recovery, and there are others who might achieve recovery except for the people that get in their way and try to help them get there and actually make them worse off. Mentally ill people? Oh, my God. You know, it goes back to Ronald Reagan, and maybe before Ronald Reagan. We cannot legally compel them to get help. They are inherently helpable. There are wondrous, um, achievements in modern medical science and psychiatric science and psychological science, and we can help them. But we're not allowed to unless.
Shouldn't we focus on what we can do?
No, I am focusing on this. I am focusing on this because it's all one giant ball of wax, as you said, because that's why you want to combine them. I am focusing on the tota- totality of the circumstances that the pu- public just addressed, and that I'm going to talk about. And I have a right to do this.
Yeah. Bruce, I thought you were responding to my question.
Okay, so I'll get back to the rest of the stuff after I've responded. Fine.
Yeah. And, and I.
Fair enough, Paul. Thank you.
And I just I'm, I'm pleased to hear there are some attorneys out there who agree with part of this and think that we can do something with it.
Can I, can I talk about that for a moment?
Sure.
The other attorneys? Okay. There is no question in the world that there are members of the public who are lawyers who spoke tonight who also have agendas because they've made that very clear in their other public comments, that they have agendas. And you heard a couple other members of the public saying they would hope that, that some of the people here could get over their hatred or anger or distrust of me and start talking about the merits. Well, there are attorneys in the public who are working an agenda that has nothing to do with the merits of this. They're going to come up with whatever argument they can to say there's a problem, and I would like to discuss the merits, the legal merits, and I think it's a matter of education. And that's why I prepared a lengthy slideshow, by the way, because it's a matter of educating the public and educating us. Because, look, you all are not attorneys. I am. And I'm not saying that I necessarily, because I'm an attorney, know better. I do know a lot. Those are, but I don't give any credence to what I heard from people who are attacking me purposefully and then coming and talking about the legality of the, of the, um, pro- proposal.
That's why I proposed, we take your item, and, I mean, be honest, you're a city councillor in this position. You're not our attorney. All due respect, all due respect. And the process is, is to have something like this legally vetted. And that's what we, I mean, that's, that's the process, whether we like it or not.
I completely agree with you, Mikey. I've been, I've been coming to city council meetings for close to two years as a resident and telling you what I'm telling you again now as a city council member about the Martin versus Boise opinion. Nobody on this council, nobody on the staff has gone to an attorney and tried to get a proper interpretation that isn't being biased by the county's political agenda of saying Martin versus Boise, we're not going to enforce your law. And I am not, this proposal accepts Martin versus Boise. It actually goes beyond accepting it. It construes it as broadly as possible, and it says, okay, here's what we can do with that decision in place and enforceable.
So let's find out what that is, and let's actually find out what that is because it's once again, not whether you're right or wrong on Martin versus Boise. I don't think we're the entity that's gonna go to the Supreme Court, and I don't think we should attempt to. Because, but let's find out what legally we can do that, that our sheriffs will enforce, and, and so that we have legs to stand on because we don't want to end up like other cities getting sued for millions of dollars.
So, you know, we, we pay a lot of money for law enforcement. I think it's $8 million a year plus addition when we need additional. Uh, we have contractual right to have any law that we have on our books which is constitutional enforced. Right now, we have a law on our books which there's a decent argument, it's unconstitutional, although I could make contrary arguments, but, but let's accept that for the sake of argument. What I'm proposing is that we put on our books a law which is not the one that has been deemed unconstitutional, which is one that's not ever been said to be unconstitutional by any court, including the Ninth Circuit, which actually follows the blueprint that the Ninth Circuit gives us for an enforceable law. And then let's see if the County Council, rather than just speaking when they don't have, when it's a hypothetical, when they're, and it's really easy for them to follow a political agenda hypothetically. Let's see when we have a law on the books that they could actually have liability to the county for failing to provide us with the law enforcement to which we're entitled. And if we have a fire that they could be liable to us for failing to enforce that law which resulted in a fire, let's see them make that same dis- argument about unenforceability and direct the sheriff not to enforce it when it's a real-life situation, not a hypothetical. Talk is cheap, talk is easy. In the real world, when people are pressed with having to make a true decision which has consequences, they make different decisions when they're given the academic hypothetical alternative to make that decision.
And you're the litigator coming out on you.
Well, well, you know what? I was well-trained. Coastal Commission doesn't have to be consulted with the, for this in any way, shape, or form. They actually will be an obstacle to getting this done if we concede that we need their approval. We don't need their approval to weaken a statute that we've had on our books for 20 years. So I'll have other comments. I see there's other people that want to talk, and I don't want to, I don't want to usurp everything, but I do have a lot of comments to make. And, um, I'm, I'm gonna have to make them.
Karen, speak for me.
Thank you. Um, going back to what Howard Rudeski said and, uh, what Bruce just, um, was addressing. It, it wasn't that long ago that, uh, the county restricted parking down, uh, between Topanga and Coastline Drive. That was allowed. And look, everybody would like stronger restrictions, I think I, safe to say, instead of midnight to 2:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. But that's what the, that's what the Coastal Commission allowed for the county. That's what we vetted with Coastal. That's what we watched happen. That's what we got. And, and I'm not sure why we had so many comments tonight, um, as if those parking restrictions had not gone into place. Um, whoever it was that said, maybe it was Doug, they went into place quite a long time ago. Um, and, and they've gone in phases. So, you know, it's not like there's been no movement. But yeah, we, uh, Bruce, I disagree with you. I don't, I don't, I don't want to see us go down a road, uh, putting a lot of time and staff resources into passing an ordinance that is struck down by Coastal and/or sets us up for a lawsuit, particularly by a, uh, I don't know what they're called, homeless rights advocate. Nobody wants that. So, you know, I think there's merit to working out as much as we can in advance before we pass an ordinance. Otherwise, we're shooting ourselves in the foot, and, and I, I don't believe you want that. And I'm not, I'm not speaking against your ordinance because I'm speaking against you personally.
You are.
I want, excuse me?
No, go ahead.
Oh, I thought other, um, speakers were muted when one of us had the floor. Should I wait for you to mute, Steve?
No, you go ahead. I won't say anything.
I'll, I'll wait.
Okay.
Okay, you're not going to mute?
Just, I'm, I'm not saying anything. Go. Karen, I sat through a whole meeting without saying anything. Go for it.
Okay. I would like to move that we put this discussion on a date to be determined hopefully tonight and go through it then after we've had vetting by the city attorney and public, uh, safety and most likely planning. So, um, okay, do I have a second?
I thought you already, I thought you already got that motion. I thought we already passed that.
Yeah, so, so let's set a date.
Well, but we're having discussion now before we stop and then have that meeting that you've proposed.
But I'm not sure why we're having all this discussion.
That's the.
When we're looking to have a special meeting date.
I believe that's the process, is that we have discussion, and then we're done, and then we'll have our meeting that you well, we haven't voted to have the meeting, but we voted to table this pending that meeting. Right?
Right. And I was gonna ask.
Oh, how are we gonna proceed here?
I'm gonna ask Reba to, that we could all take a look at our calendars, and let's pick a date right now.
Great.
So I, I would ask that we, uh, put this at least, uh, towards the end of February, so we have, um, some time to prepare, uh, the reports and do an analysis. I'm a little unclear because you have a couple different motions going on. Um, Karen's motion was to send this to the city attorney for a legal analysis. Um, so if that needs to happen, I would defer to the city attorney on how long that will take. Um, obviously Mondays are gonna be off of, uh, the availability, and then we also have certain commission meetings on other days, so uh, we're probably looking towards the end of February, beginning of March for an availability, a date, but I'll refer to, to everybody on those questions.
Do you have a clear, a date that we could pencil in or ink in right now? I know I'm pushing here.
And.
So we could do, um, Thursday, February 25th is available, and if, um, I'm speaking out of staff, Heather and Alex, if I'm missing anything on the calendar, it's not on my calendar, please speak up. Um,
The only thing on that date is wastewater advisory.
Correct, and they haven't been meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and then the following week, uh, Thursday, March 4th looks available. Um, so those would be the two dates that I would suggest. Um, I'm, I'm trying to find something later in the week because obviously every Monday is taken by either planning commissioner council. So it just gets to be a long week for our staff to have to do both meetings.
Let's, let's do Thursday, the 25th. If, if everyone thinks their calendar can can work with their, or they know they're not otherwise somewhere else.
That works for me.
Okay. Does it work for you, Bruce, Paul, Steve?
I will make any date work for me.
I, my question is, give me the detail, a real crisp understanding of what we're going to see at that meeting. We're gonna have Bruce's proposal, which I think, okay, and hopefully that will be vetted by whoever else we're gonna pick is gonna vet it. What are we gonna see from the city for their plan?
I can read you, uh, uh, Steve, I can read you what, oh. Sorry, I'm pushing too many buttons. Um, I can read you what the, uh, council action and direction was from the meeting.
Reba, Reba, I know what that was. My question is, I think the residents want to see a, a plan that says, here is what it's gonna look like for us to, to deal with this homeless situation in some detail.
I, we, we can, we, the homeless group has developed a plan that we can look at, yes.
Who's gonna deliver that? Who's responsible for making sure we've got that? I just want to know.
I, Susan Duennas oversees that, so she certainly has the plan.
So Susan Duennas is, is the, the point person for delivering a version of a plan that says, here's how we're gonna deal with the homeless situation. Is that what I understand?
Steve, so, so there's quite a few people who are involved in all of the efforts associated with the homeless effort. So they've got Susan Duennas on our staff. Give, give me a moment. Just let me walk through it. We've got.
We've got Susan Duennas on our staff. She also works with our consultants from the People Concern. We also have a consultant who's working with the Cog, Gabriel. And we have um, a partnership with the Sheriff's Department through our host team and our Met team. Um, so we have a lot of people who are coming together. So I don't, at this point, see that it's just going to be one individual. And we also have our homeless working group. We also have other, uh, you know, stakeholders in the community. So the way I would see it coming forward is it would actually be a presentation by all those people who have um, been working on this as an effort. It's not, it's not going to be solved by one staff member or two staff members. It's going to be solved by everyone.
I'm not asking for one staff member to solve. I just want to make sure that when we have this meeting, we've got Bruce's plan, which we can discuss. And say, does this look like it's a viable process moving us forward? Or the city's got this, we got a task force since 2016. We put over a million bucks into it. I, and, and I'm just want to make sure that somebody from that group is going to give us a detailed plan. That says, here's another version of how we deal with this. And if it's not Susan Duennas, I don't know who that could is. But somebody's got to be the point person responsible for delivering it. Otherwise, we'll never get it. I've done this a lot. I mean, I've seen enough of the, I've done this. We spent seven years on short-term rentals. We don't want to do. We got to move this thing forward. Somebody's got to. Mikey, you got a date that says, I want this done on this date so we can get it done. Otherwise, we're never going to get it done.
But it may, but let's be honest, it may take more than one meeting. The public has every right to have an input too.
Mikey, I agree with you. I, it may take, but the, the, what we want to do is give the, the public a version that says, here are your options. Here's what it's going to look like. Here's some detail that says, if we're going to deal with this, here's how we're going. And, and you're right, it may take another meeting to have them come back, but they got to have some need to go home and discuss.
And we have to decide if we agree with the direction and if it needs to be tweaked and et cetera. There's, you know.
I agree.
Obviously.
But we need something to shoot at.
There's not dealing with this in just, in a can, ready to go.
Right, we need something to shoot at and that we need detail to do that.
So do we all have consensus on February 25th? Now I'll get to you in a sec, Bruce. I think we do. Okay, so that's the date we'll hold and hopefully it'll stick. I think it would be fine. So we have a date, we have a plan, we have a homeless night, we can just talk homelessness and we don't have other city business.
But tell me what you want to occur at that meeting, Mike. You got to define.
Steve, you've asked it like repeatedly. I don't know how else to answer you anymore.
I mean, are you, are you required?
There's nothing agendized yet. So speaking about an item that's not agendized is, is.
But you've got to, you've got to, if you're going to have a meeting.
I'm not going to, I, I'm not going to make up an agenda to satisfy your question.
Okay, we've agreed on a meeting date. Can we just move on, please?
Yes, we have, we have a date. I think we're, I think we're good. I think we're moving forward.
You got nothing.
I, I don't see how you see that. It's a little confusing to me, but.
Wait, then tell me, tell me what you want the city to present to you, Mikey. Just define that for me if you would do that.
I have, watch the tape.
No, do it again. Do it one more time so we're all clear, please.
May we please move on?
I don't understand. You're confusing me, Steve.
No, I'm not, the, the question is, what do you want the city to present to you? In terms of a detailed plan of what we're going to do with, we got Bruce's plan. What do you, what other plan do you want to see presented and how, who's going to do that for you?
A plan that helps us deal effectively with the homeless situation.
That is constitutional.
And, and, and all the aspects that go with that, which is, as Bruce knows from all his work on this, considerable.
And who's responsible for delivering that plan to us?
I'm pretty sure that's been answered, Steve.
Who, but who is it?
I consider this conversation combative. Let's move on.
No, it isn't combative. This is what you do. You, you, if you're going to have a meeting, somebody, you, you make sure you know exactly what you're going to get done. That's all I'm trying to do. I don't care who does it.
I know what we're going to get done and what we're going to attempt to do. But with conversations like this, getting things done has proven to be kind of a challenge, to be honest.
Mikey, what we're trying to do is make sure that when we do this meeting, the residents walk away with a definition that says. I understand the options we're being presented. So they can go back and think of, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to give the residents a perspective that says, here are the different things we could, we can deal with. They got to have a real clear picture.
Okay, there's no secrets. I don't know, I'm not sure. We're gonna have, yes, Bruce?
Did I say something? Okay. So, for, actually, just something to think about, this is unrelated, but. Um, I attend a lot of Zoom meetings where we're able to use the participant function to put a hand up. And it just sits up on the screen. It's almost every Zoom meeting I've ever participated in, it sits up on the screen. And then there's no need to keep raising your hand. And then whoever's in charge can pick people to speak in the order in which they see that hand raised. And I wonder if technologically, we might think about doing that. I think it'll make things go a lot more smoothly when we're having these discussions. I'll just, I'll just throw that out.
Like that right there?
I don't see the hand. Yes, like that, exactly. I don't have, I don't have the capacity to do that when I've tried it on my computer.
You don't have the reaction button?
I don't believe so.
Lower right on the bottom.
Okay, I will, I will, thank, thank, so I, I think that would be great if we could do that, because it will keep things more orderly. Now, the thing I was, the thing I wanted to say on, on the merits is, um. I, I'm fearful that we are conflating, confusing and conflating two related but completely separate concepts. There's the question of what can we do and should we do to provide protection to the community? And there's the question of what can we do and should we do to provide benefits for the homeless? And I understand that the more benefits you provide, perhaps you make the community safer. But there are, there are things that can be done for safety that are separate and independent, completely independent of anything you do. Just like speed limits will affect homeless people among others, but they're not being done because of homeless. They're being done to protect people from speeding, from going too fast and creating hazardous situations. There's, there's, so there's, what I was addressing with my proposal, and I'm not advocating it right now, I'm just saying, that, that focuses exclusively. Solely and exclusively on the kinds of things we can do to provide protection for the community. It, 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 it actually does have some incident, incidental benefit for the homeless in the sense that right now. They are just where, well, it, it has some benefits and I could have talked about them if I gave the presentation, but I'm not going to go there right now. But it's a, it's a safety concern. Then there's the whole other issue of shelters, parking lots, food, therapy, all those things. It got, there's probably a hundred more that I'm not naming. And I understand this meeting is going to be for both of those things, but I'm concerned that what I'm hearing is they're getting mixed, mixed together as it's one subject. To be discussed at that meeting. And if that's the case, we're never, ever going to get to the safety issue. Because I guarantee you, we're not going to solve the question at the next meeting. Or the meeting after that, or the meeting after that, or the meeting in 2022. On what we're going to do for the homeless, because the community is never going to get together in support of anything.
We're going to have to make, that's why we're in city council. We make the hard decisions and.
Well, I'm going to make my.
Listen to our, our constituents. We, we want them to speak. We hear them. We listen, you know, they get, get ahold of us at home or every, all of it. And then we have to make decisions for the city. That's our job.
So, so I just want to make sure that we're clear. That when we have this next meeting, in addition to anything we're discussing by way of benefits and shelters and solutions. We're also specifically talking about health, welfare and safety, because. Let me, let me just finish, because, because, yep. Every day we delay, putting something in place that we can enforce, that can protect the community, is another day that the community could be harmed. And we've been delaying and delaying. It's been going on for years now. Yes, we have.
No one, no one here is delaying. You, you haven't been part of the process, to be honest. And, and no one's delaying. It's tricky, like, like Jim said very well. We can't bring something forward that's unenforceable or gets us sued either. It's not going to, it doesn't make sense. How's that going to make anyone safe?
Nobody wants to hear.
We, we end up losing two million dollars in a lawsuit. There goes our ability to, to provide safety measures. So we have to do it right.
But I have, we've not presented the proposal and walked through the details and explained why what you're fearful of won't happen. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong. But maybe I'm wrong, but you've prejudged the outcome without us having a meeting to discuss it. When you say things like, we're going to get sued and we're going to lose, you've made a prejudgment of where we're going to go with this.
I've expressed a fear, I've expressed a fear, just like you've expressed judgment on county council. So we all have our preconceived potentials and, and worries, but. I think we're moving forward. This item is decided and in all fairness, let's, let's get to that meeting. Let's be prepared and let's get some work done. So, okay, we're moving on now to.
Oh, so you, we're, we're terminating the discussion?
Yeah, it's time to move on. This weird, weird, it's time to move on. We have a motion.
I was going to respond to some comments from the public, because I thought that's what we do.
Well, we have a motion and we have a plan to move forward. And that's, that's what we're doing.
So, so, we're not going to respond to the public?
I, I hear it in a voice. Is that you, Heather?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that um, Jim has his hand up.
Right.
Okay, are we all, we agree to let Jim speak?
Yes.
Okay, okay, Jim?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Now it can.
Oh, okay. Hey, let's not forget, just like those signs we got through Coastal Commission. They took a, a process. But like Steve's energy toward this, Bruce's energy toward it, it's a positive thing. But let's all just work together and understand. There has been things going on that are positive for the city. So let's, let's create, and I totally agree with like what Steve's saying, a solid, something, a substance, not just talking about it. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Jim. Okay.
Do we need a roll call vote on that, Heather?
I knew that Karen made a motion, but I'm not sure if there was a second in there.
I believe Paul seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Are you terminating discussion on the motion?
We're going to move forward and we'll spend an evening just on this subject. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have that authority as the presiding office? I think you do, right? John, the, the mayor can cut off discussion on a motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We've had quite a bit of discussion too, so, you know, but we have, we're, we are full force on this, a hundred percent. And I'm glad everyone's on board. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Fairer?
Yes.
Mayor Perkem Brzanty?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
No.
Councilmember Yurin?
You're muted, Steve. You're muted.
Remind me what the motion is we're voting here, just the date?
No, this is a motion to send it to council and to vet it and then have a meeting to discuss this and something else that, I don't know what it is.
On the 25th?
On a specific date.
On February 25th.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Is that a yes, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. And Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Could I request a five minute break, please?
I'll second that.
Bruce, are you there? Okay. Looks like we're all back. Do I have everyone? One, two, three, four, five. Yes. Okay. One item, seven E and seven F. And. My motion is to do what we need to do and direct both of these. With an exception on seven F. To the policy committee. To get to work on instantly. I think we can all agree our policies are outdated. They desperately need revision. And. That's the next step.
Um, I second that.
Okay.
Mayor Pearson, I ask you to inquire if there's public comments.
Yeah.
Yes, of course, of course. Um, how many speakers do we have on this item?
Eighteen.
Sorry?
Thirteen.
Okay, can we have the speakers, please?
Absolutely. Uh.
What, once again, I just, so you just go right to public speakers? We don't, we don't have any presentation of what it is they're speaking about whatsoever?
Well, it's a public document. The public's had a chance to see it.
So are appeals, and so where is everything else we ever do? We always have a, a presentation first. Why are you changing the rules all of a sudden?
I'm, okay. It's seventy-five page PowerPoint. It's a small novel.
I wasn't gonna do that. I wasn't gonna do that. I just asked if we're gonna have any presentation at all. You, you said no, apparently. None at all.
I was gonna try and move things forward so we can get on this. I think. We have plenty of time to just for discussion, but it needs to go through the policy committee and we need to do this right and we need to get it moving.
Yeah, I seconded that motion.
We agree with you. It needs work. Your stuff is on the public record appreciated. Um, we have a motion and a second on that, so. But we're gonna, but we're gonna go to public speakers first.
So we don't get discussion on the motion? We have a motion and a second, but no discussion and no decision?
No, we're gonna go to public speakers, I said.
Okay. Ja- John, is this appropriate process?
Councilman associating the mayor's departmentarian of meeting and gets to control the meeting, his actions are overruled by majority vote of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Are we hearing speakers for both seven E and seven?
Yes, of course. Let's hear them together.
And so do you want to do the same thing, um, four and a half minutes for those that have signed up for both items?
Yes, that's great. And how many are signed up for each? Do you know?
Um, there are thirteen for seven E, what that translates into for seven F. In addition is. Ten additional speakers that have not signed up for both items.
Okay, great.
Okay, uh, our first speaker is Kamala Conley Yulik, but again, I don't see her in the meeting. Um, so we'll move on to Marissa Coughlin.
Hello again, council members.
Can you hear me? I can hear you.
Okay, um, thank you for entertaining me again, and I hope, uh, Councilman Euring is not grumpy because he's a year older. But, uh. Yeah, I just, I, I do think I agree with that this should go to committee. Um, part of the, uh, for more, more than one reason. Um, I, I'm a little troubled that, that, um. Council members are not talking to staff to draft things to bring to the council. There's so much reading and so much extra stuff that happens anyway. It does need to be looked at by an attorney. Our policy eight needs. To be updated. Um, I am concerned on the seven F portion, though, some of the. Comments that are made, that there's unconstrained, council members will have unconstrained inspection and. Information rights that exist now for any person in the city. It's public information except for closed session. And in all the years that we've been a city, there is not one department, one per personnel person, whether it's finance, clerk, planning that I can't get. Something from if I ask and I know what I want. Um, I think also, uh, semi-annual performance evaluations, I think that's targeted to the current problem. My concern about the current problem and the way that it's being addressed in this, we never, i- if, um, Riva leaves. I don't know who's gonna want that job. The way it's being handled. I think there should be, uh, uh, more privacy with the council. Uh, I don't do, I don't do social media, so thank goodness I don't have to read what I'm hearing on the street. Cause it's ten times worse than, I'm sure, being read. Uh, so that bothers me. Um, also, uh. As far as destruction of documents, I'm not sure if Councilman Silverstein is aware. That's been a policy directive. By almost every municipality, county and state, the Waterworks District for thirty years has been destroying documents. Uh, uh, they don't, people, they can't afford retention of the documents. It was before digitization that this began. And now most people, including our city, are starting to digitize stuff, so there will be a record. But that, that's not an uncommon practice at all, anywhere. Um, so I'm glad technology's caught up with it. Uh, the independent investigation, I think, should be left. Not to the council or any committee within the city. It's any law enforcement or any. Legal counsel, if they, if they have a complaint, it, it'll be heard. I don't think it, it's appropriate for the council or any. Subcommittee of residents or appointees or anything to be dealing with something like that. Um. Let me see, my. Okay, I mentioned that one. I think, uh. I think that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Marissa.
Let me just thank Marissa for, I'm just happy to have another birthday, Marissa. Thank you very, very much.
And next we'll hear from Rosemary I.
Okay. Are you there, Rosemary?
Maybe she's not at her device right now, so we can come back to her.
Thank you.
Next would be Lynn Norton.
Okay.
Hi again, can you hear me?
Yes, you're a little far away, but we can hear you.
Oh, okay, I'll talk a little louder. So, um, I had previously sent comments about this. My main thought is this. I know that there are a lot of issues that really are dividing this city council right now. And I think there's elements in here, though, where you can agree. And I think it would be really good. To just focus on for tonight, the ones where you can agree, where it's kind of like a unanimous thing, so that it's not this, isn't, you know. I, I think that would be a good start, and then we could progress from there. And for instance, for me. I, I would hope that all five of you would want to investigate what the heck happened. When Jefferson Wagner was raided at his home, because, I mean, it's just an open-ended question. I have no theories whatsoever. It's just that it was just one of the most over-the-top egregious things that happened to, you know. I, I just think that we should care about that, you know, that Malibu, that we should care about that and just get to the bottom of it, because it was obviously. I mean, I just hope you all agree that that should be investigated. And then another thing that I think is, uh, a no-brainer is. Just to create a policy that staff is not to delete e-mails. Whatever the reason was for doing it in the past, we don't even need to rehash it. It's just that we should not be deleting emails. Um, most of those emails are subject to the Public Records Act. To try to differentiate which ones you can delete and which ones you can't delete is, is really much more work than just to say, don't delete them. You know, and it just doesn't seem good to a citizen to say that we have a policy of deleting emails. It just doesn't pass the sniff test. I just, we just shouldn't do that. And then another one, I saw something in there. It's been a while since I actually read it, but there was something about. You know, having, uh, the meetings, um. Allow for more public process. And I've always been a big advocate for town hall meetings, especially on issues like homelessness that, that are, are like. Big citywide issues. But what I would think that you could do tonight is just vote to solicit input from the public. At this time, about how the, you know, recommendations for the council process could be more open to, you know, to citizens and. Like a lot of times, the, you know, a back and forth on certain topics is just way better. I mean, I spent my career as a business analyst. And you could not go into a room where people have competing needs and just in a serial fashion, take everybody's input and then sit there and devise a solution. You know what I mean? You need to have like back and forth and like would this work, especially for example, with something like the homelessness meeting. Anyway, my, my main thing is that. I, I would really appreciate if you all would focus on those items where you really can agree. So that, that it would be a kind of a cohesive thing for the city council to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Next would be Craig Hill.
Oh, hi. Do we get four and a half minutes for two items?
Yes.
Okay, I, cause I signed up for both. Um, so first, just a few handy reminders, and then I'll get more specific about the substance. Um, it would be great if each of you would think less in terms of compromise and more in terms of collaboration. I.e., is this really an either-or situation or might there be a different approach that satisfies more of everyone's concerns? Cause some of these matters will be less zero-sum than others. So try to separate your interests from your positions. Put your ideas on the dissecting table and step back, leaving your ego out of it. If you feel yourself reacting defensively, you're making this too much about you. Um, let's not hear, but that's the way we've always done it. The point is to take a fresh look. Clearly, there hasn't been enough transparency in some areas, and on the other hand, of course, changes for change's sake isn't necessarily good either. I think these matters shouldn't be decided just by five council members and staff. They should be subject to a public process. Ideas should be made available for comment, like a draft EIR, and the public's input can be folded into your deliberations for the final version. Um, your ad hoc committee can offer a few examples of the things that the public might care to consider, and then you go from there. Now, um, as far as there being no report on this item, and. That seems like a symptom ironically of the lack of transparency. We should, that, we should be getting those. And then on item, uh, the, on policy eight, um. That particular item provides neither rationale nor evidence in support of the proposed changes. Ironically, it seems it would reduce transparency and efficiency and lead to slower, less reliable decisions. Because if questions of staff don't get answered in time for a hearing, that hearing may have to be continued. Or if there's not adequate information to make an affirmative approval, a project could get denied. So just broadly, I think the way to make government more responsive and streamlined is to open up the flow of information, not to constrain and condition it. If the Costa Noster had an email policy, it would be dump it all after thirty days. The pervasively named, or perversely named, I should say, document retention policy. Should be abolished. Mass email storage is cheap. Nothing should be confidential except for a limited class of communications. Associated with active legal action. Indeed, non-confidential emails should be publicly searchable and on-base, or at least some subset of them that would provide. A historical record, an institutional memory. We should be able to look up those kinds of things. Council should have more control over your own agenda. That's underscored by the ruckus over the last minute insertion by the city manager of. Item six A, now two meetings ago. Um, and so how about approving the agenda two weeks in advance? Allowing only urgent items to be inserted in the interim. Council members should have equal access to information. It seems to me too often the Brown Act is overzealously interpreted. For use as a shield against transparency. Um, and we've talked about all this before, but these meetings have to be more responsive. Allow the speaker minutes to be donated. Just open the mic for a moment to check that the donors are present, and then you know, and you can give those minutes away. Speakers should have the option as to whether to be seen or not, so they can hold up an exhibit or use gestures like air quotes when they talk. Um, but make that an option, not a requirement either way. And check regularly for the raised hands. I know you guys were just talking about it, but, uh, even a member of the public, if they don't have a comment that's urgent and on point. You can cut them off immediately, and, and they'll know that, but at least provide them the opportunity to weigh in and maybe they have something that you need to hear. And if it seems off-point, you just cut them off and you wasted five seconds. So, um, I think anything you can do to, to make the measures more. Live and simultaneous the way we have, uh, or I should say spontaneous. Way we had them in a live room, that, that would be better. Uh, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig.
Next on the list, excuse me, is Ryan Embry, but I don't see him, uh, in the meeting. So we'll move on to Bill Sampson.
Okay.
I'm, I'm signed up for both.
Yep, four and a half minutes.
Thank you. Uh, I wasn't sure again if they were combined. I did send written comments. Steve Ouring brought up tonight. Seven years on short-term rental ordinance. I will tell you, I was involved in all of that. I never wanted a short-term rental ordinance. I asked the council, asked council members, and this council, the council on which, um. Mikey and Karen previously served, enforce what's already there. Everyone refused. The city manager refused, staff refused. The only thing I ever heard on it was from a lower-level code enforcement officer at the time. Who said, oh, these people have the right to rent their property. No one would tell me why the zoning ordinance was not enforced. Opacity has been a real problem in this city. Now, three of you. Karen, I wasn't the world's greatest trial lawyer. Watching you look at Bruce tonight, it is obvious you would traumatically neuter him if given the opportunity. That kind of behavior is not good. I understand that Bruce is strident. And. Mikey, you're much better. Paul, you have cordially joined to those other two. And it was cordial, even before you took office, even before you took your oath. You screwed the, the plurality of us that voted for Bruce out of a position that was rightfully his, purely out of spite. Then you introduce seven E as a supposed reform. That's not a reform. That is furthering the opaqueness that the city has been victim to. We citizens have been a victim of it. So drop that item. It's bogus. It's a red herring. Move on to seven F. Consider it. You're apparently going to add, send it to committee. That's fine. I would just like to say. In addition, if I can find the quote. I can't find the quote, so I will paraphrase the words of U.S. Supreme Court Justice Louis Brandeis. Who was the first Jewish member of that august body. And he said, sunlight is a very powerful disinfectant. It's about time the city opened its window. It has refused to do so. The short-term rental ordinance is as good a re, uh, example as I can think of. The fact that it sat there for seven years with no enforcement of existing law, refusal to support existing law for no apparent reason. The city attorney at the time specifically denied that she had said, you don't, you may not enforce it. Yet the council refused to enforce it. Some of you weren't there then. You weren't, I mean. You know, Joan House was there, Rosenthal was there, Cybert was there. I think even Kersley was there, Lamonti was there, and they all just sat on their hands. Then we wound up with this cockamamie system you've got now. Then we wound up with this cockamamie system you've got now, which I happen to know that already permits are being issued where false statements have been made, brought to the attention of staff, and it's been sent off into the netherworld. I hope I actually hear on it. But the seven F is a better proposal. Seven E is not a reform. It was an usurpation of an attempt at reform. It's the sort of thing that a tobacco industry would do when somebody says it's time to quit selling tobacco. Well, we'll only sell it on Thursday and Sunday and we'll only sell it if it's got fruit flavor in it. It's bogus. Consider seven F. I'm sure it has flaws. I'm sure it can be made better. I'm sure it could be made worse. Don't make it worse. Open yourselves up. Let us know what's going. You ought to honor us. It's really disgusting, as Joe Patterson said, that the three of you have been this rude to Mr. Silverstein. He deserved better. I know he strident, but he deserved better. So did those of us who voted for him, and that's far more important. You dissed us. You were not cordial to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next we'll hear from Joe Patterson.
Hello.
I can hear you, Joe.
All right. Thank you. All right. Yeah, I do believe I signed up for both of these items.
Yep, your timer reflects it.
Yeah, okay. And I believe my wife Lori also signed up for these, but she's, she's going to abstain, so I'll, I'll just speak for both of us at the moment. Transparency, it, you know, on the city level, the county level, state level, national level, I think that's something that's just innately expected by the citizens. We, we expect transparency. We expect to know what our representatives are doing, what the business they're doing for us as citizens, as your constituents. Politics is an ugly thing and we, you know, we've seen it through millenniums, you know, but, and we're seeing it at the lowest, lowest levels. You know, I, I think that our local city politics here in this little town of 13,000 or whatever we consist of, you know, and, and that's not to belittle what you do, but you know, I mean, this is like the lowest level, you know, we're talking about here. You know, and, and I know that may sound like it makes, makes, you know, our city or city council or our city government seem unimportant, but you're very important, very important to us, your constituents and to our city. It's, it, you know, what you do affects our, all of us in our daily lives. So I urge you to, to do everything you can to, to try to, to engage us as citizens and to make the business that you were performing for us transparent to us and to, to you, to our, our elected officials, the people that we rely on. And I believe that seven F is in the spirit of that is, is accomplishing that goal or, or working to accomplish that goal. And I believe that seven E is the opposite of that. And so I'm very against that. I think it's a, a failed attempt to try to counteract what we've elected or some of us have elected our representatives to do for us is to, to expose that transparency. And I hear it in every, you know, a lot of people, you know, I haven't been a citizen, a resident of Malibu for 40 years, although I grew up, born and raised here in the San Fernando Valley. I've been spending my whole life, I've been coming to Zuma and Bride Beach and, you know, surf rider. I mean, I grew up here. You know, and unfortunately now I've, I've worked my way, you know, through life and now I can, I'm proud to be a resident here. And, you know, I just, I, I can't tell you enough how, how much it means to me and how much it means to us as, as citizens and residents here to know what you're doing. And, and I hear from the old timers, you know, I just keep hearing this over and over again, you know? We don't see it, you know, it's hidden and, and I want that to stop. And that's all I'd say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
And next we'll hear from Scott Eater.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, important things. Happy birthday to Steve. And secondly, you know, is this the second or the third council meeting this week? It's hard to keep track. And, but thank you, all of you for all the work you put in. Thank you to the staff. For seven E, Paul's motion, I think, Paul, you're on the right track. And I think, but I think it ought to be structured differently. I think that, Paul, you should head a committee of citizens to make these decisions, make these recommendations. They're not decisions. Bring it back to the council. Okay, what do the citizens really want? I think that's essential and I think that would be a much better way to structure it. For seven F, transparency is something we all expect and we've not gotten for years. Things are hidden in these closed meetings that do not need to be hidden. I mean, sure, if you're going to re- review the salary for the two city staff that the council oversees, namely the city manager and the city attorney, that's going to be private. But that's about it, or maybe legal, legal challenges. Sure, that's, that's got to be set aside. Everything else ought to be on the table and our city unfortunately has a reputation of hiding things. I don't know why. I mean, when Bruce asked for, you know, he wanted to record conversations with Riva. I mean, somebody can record my conversation. What do I care? It doesn't make any difference. It gives the impression, and I've tried to tell Riva this, it gives the impression that you're hiding something. And we shouldn't want to do that. We should be as open as possible. So with that, I, I do support the idea that we're seeing in seven F. I had a question. Oh, first, Jim Braden called me out for saying that they didn't do anything. I was not referring and I emailed him and apologized for that. If I, if I was misconstruing what I said, I wasn't talking about the sheriff. I think there's a reputation in the city for not enforcing many things for the Airbnbs on and on. You guys know the list and it doesn't seem like anything gets enforced and I think that's a real problem. And so I was hopeful that, you know, having a new measure, which is now tabled, we'd be able to enforce parking and do something on the homeless. I do have a question. I understand that the deadline for applying for a permit for a short-term rental was the 15th. Well, what happens if somebody, one, is already running an Airbnb and they did not apply for a permit? And secondly, does that mean you can't get a permit anymore? And thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
Next we'll hear from Joe Drummond.
Okay.
Hi, I signed up for both.
Okay. Four and a half.
So.
There you go.
Oh, that's great. Thanks. So I'm speaking today on behalf of me and my husband Colin to express our support for the seven F, the proposal to instill transparency, accountability and ethics in all aspects of Malibu city government. We love what Bruce, Steve and all of you hopefully will support in bringing more transparency to the city and its departments. I do agree with Craig Hill that not having a report for these items shows the lack of transparency occurring during this hearing. With regards to seventy, I'm speaking against this item as it is the opposite of transparency and ease of transfer of information. It's just making the bureaucracy for obtaining information much greater and more difficult and less transparent. Limiting the time of city staff's efforts also reduces the transparency and ease of transfer of information. We are happy Mayor Mikey stated that the city is committed to transparency, accountability and ethical conduct in everything it does, both at the staff and council levels. So I, I'm sure that this will continue. As some of you might or might not be aware of, the Big Rock Homeowners Association Anti-Watering Committee has been trying to obtain copies of documents affiliated with our district assessment for over a year as we still have no idea why certain items are removed from our assessment districts such as slow stability reporting and the swales upkeep and maintenance. Transparency between city departments will keep everyone accountable and hopefully the city planning and public works department in particular. I've had much difficulty with using the public records requests and getting information on city codes and clarifying certain definitions. And in certain coastal development permit cases, I've had difficulty obtaining information that should be required for approvals and public record and access easily. There are also many things in Jefferson Wagner's affidavit that needs to be addressed, especially what's been going on in the planning department the last several years with their extreme pro-development stance that goes against the mission and vision statement of the city of Malibu. Malibu should be committed to true transparency, accountability and ethical conduct in all aspects of Malibu city government. So we applied the proposal cosponsored by city council member Silverstein Euring and strongly encourage you to embrace and adopt the reform initiatives for Malibu city government as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Next we'll hear from Georgia Goldfarb.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I can hear you, Georgia.
Okay, great. Okay. The trifecta of transparency, accountability and ethics are a cornerstone for democracy. Without these conditions, the public cannot have either faith and or understanding of our government. In recent years, these have not been met in Malibu. Just for example, there have been manipulations with city property attempting to be sold to the fire department that was ultimately not approved. A really core decision, poor follow-up and possibly worse with the application to coastal for the pesticides. Approval to, for Edison to decimate several acres of Escha and significant incompetency. At the very least, many concerns about our disaster preparedness for the Rosie Fire. Sunlight is a disinfectant. I support seven F and for the same reasons I do not support seven E. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia.
Next we'll hear from Howard Redsky.
Mute.
I can hear you, I think, Howard.
Okay, now I'm unmuted, sorry. Okay, good evening again. Regarding E, it looks to me like it's just procedural of how you get what you want. And if there's an email to whomever, then that's transparency. And I, I don't know, maybe I'm in the minority. I, I highly doubt it. But for 20 years, I've been able to attain any document I wanted, speak with any head of any department that I wanted, get knowledgeable factual information. Sometimes I didn't agree with them and we had discussions, maybe heated, but I was always able to get something. And I've never been told, no, you can't have it. So I don't know how that's come about, but it seems to be a big issue tonight. And regarding F, transparency and accountability, I'm going to speak to the issues that the accusations in Jefferson made and other people have made about the city, the planning department, et cetera. I personally have never seen any of that. But I think that the city should hire a specialized firm that's beyond reproach, that all five city council members agree upon. So there can't be anything said after that I didn't pick that person. That person wasn't good. And they should look at all the accusations about staff that Jefferson made about his house, all those things, and let's put this to bed once and for all. If there's actions that need to be taken, there was wrongdoing, it should be taken. And then let's put this past us once and for all. But I think all five city council people should agree on an outside firm or group or whomever that has expertise in doing this and let them do it and tell them to do it as quickly as possible. So we can put this behind us because it's a big issue and you know, if there's any of this that I've not seen, I would be the first one to stick my hand up and say, you know, let's take action against them. But if there's nobody to take action against or no wrongdoing, let's move past that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Next we'll hear from Lori Patterson.
Okay.
Not sure if she wanted to speak, but.
I don't know. Lori, are you there? Do you want to speak? Maybe let's circle back and see at the end.
Okay, and we're, we're at the end now.
Oh, we are.
Go back to Rosemary and see if she.
Okay. Yeah, great. I see her right here, but I don't, she's muted at the moment.
Yeah.
Okay, was that just the speakers for seven E or do you still have speakers for seven F?
We do have speakers for seven F. You want to move into those now?
Yeah, and we can circle back to Lori and Rosemary.
Okay, so next we'll hear from Mark Bowdy.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mark.
Great. Hey, happy birthday, Steve. I didn't realize it was your birthday. And seventy, I think Howard's right. Seventy is basically simple and short and worth adopting and it, it is about professionalism. Malibu has a long history of trying to be cordial and work as a team. I think that has been lost in the last 60 days. Seven F, I guess, to throw Bruce a compliment, I think an outside investigation of the circumstances surrounding the Wagner affidavit is a good idea. There's about 20 lawyers involved in the Hezar investigation in downtown Los Angeles. I drive from my house in Point Doom to downtown Los Angeles all the time. There's lots of good lawyers to pick from for that that don't have any nexus to Malibu. Now, seven F, I'll, I'll start as a lawyer who has tried a lot of cases, including a lot of cases against lawyers. I've cross-examined a lot of lawyers. I've had them on the stand live in front of juries. Seven F is too long. It's too complicated. It doesn't add anything. There's literally nothing in it of any value. You also have to look closely at the author of it to understand what the motive of the author may be. And here's where I have bad news. The author is a newly elected rookie whose campaign promises and a platform of I'll never back down are to fire two of the most important professionals that serve the city. The female city manager and a law firm that is widely known in Southern California as the single best lawyer for cities in Southern California. Far more qualified than Bruce. Bruce, nobody appears to know this in Malibu, appears to have been expelled from his law firm in Delaware for committing the law firm on a sunken treasure case to commit a fraud on a federal court. The federal judge in that case referred Bruce Silverstein to be investigated for criminal prosecution by the U S Attorney's Office in the Southern District of Florida. by the U.S. Attorney's Office in the Southern District of Florida. He is an unemployed lawyer who was told to get out of the law firm after his law firm was sued because of Bruce's conduct for racketeering. You better know who you elected because I have 25 emails from people who voted for Bruce Silverstein who are saying, we screwed up, we got to look at a recall. Only takes 20 votes to sign a recall petition. It only takes 2,200 voters to recall Bruce. The two mobile home parks near my house, Malibu Park, Trancas, and Point Doom is enough to recall him. Bruce, you better start playing team ball. You're a rookie, you're the guy at the end of the bench. You better start acting civilized. The rest of you, run it, run the city three to two if you need to. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Michael White. Well, actually, you know what? I don't see him in the meeting.
I don't either at the moment.
Okay, um, I also don't see the next speaker, Robert Brinkman.
Yeah, I don't either.
Don't see Daphne and Anita. Let's see. I think our next speaker is Mario Sandoval.
Okay.
Good evening, council members and staff. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mario. Great.
My name is Mario Sandoval. I'm a project manager with the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of our executive officer, Joe Ednison. The MRCA supports this item for transparency, accountability, and ethics for all aspects of Malibu's city government. We welcome Councilmember Silverstein and Euring's initiative to instill a culture of openness and forthright dealings. However, Mr. Ednison has asked me to make sure to emphasize that we do not subscribe to the comments that impinge the integrity of your city manager or your previous city attorney. Although the MRCA and the city often disagree on matters of legal interpretation and jurisdictional priorities, we do not believe city staff operates in an underhanded manner. We simply believe the city staff is oftentimes wrong about public access. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario.
And next, we'll hear from Hamish Patterson.
Okay.
Hello?
I can hear you, Hamish.
Hi, everybody. Right off the bat, the, what got this all started off wrong is this became a personality issue versus an institution issue. And I'm all for transparencies. I think there's huge problem with the institute of our city government and its connectedness to outside agencies and county agencies and all the jurisdictions that crisscross our city. And one of the things that Bruce and Steve, I hope you get on this thing, is there needs to be some accountability as why the cog gets to select our representative to the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee. This is where it's going down. As a person who's been to many Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee meetings, this committee has all sorts of influence of what goes on here in Malibu and so does the cog. So what I want to see know is why there isn't a citizen interface about overseeing what goes on in these committee meetings and the minutes from these committee meetings. That's where the public's not being served. All sorts of stuff goes down at the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee that has all sorts of influence on the city of Malibu. And same with the cog. Bruce, Steve, why is our Santa Monica Bay Committee Restoration Representative selected by the cog? That's a big question to ask. And again, we've had, you look at the Lagoon Project, you look at that project that's just outside of the city as far as the reclaiming of Malibu Creek. These will negatively influence our community. We need a citizens oversight committee of outside influence by various state entities. That's where it is. It's not Reva the human being, it's the nature of the city of Malibu and it's tentacles of jurisdictions that reach into this community. Water District 29 has all sorts of influence on what goes on in the city. Caltrans, the cog, dude, look into the cog. So when we, what we did wrong, or what went wrong is it got turned into a personality thing. That's not the problem. Pepperdine wields all sorts of influence in our city. And most people don't know that Pepperdine is not part of our city, though it sits essentially in our city, but it's outside of our city and it has all sorts of influence. So Bruce, you got it. The Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee, that's where it is, that's where it is. So thank you and keep up the good work, all five of you and everybody at the city hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Hamish.
Next, we'll hear from Barry Haldeman.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Barry.
Good. First of all, I'm honored to be named on the Arts Commission and I will do my best to contribute. And also a happy birthday to Steve Euring. It's nice for you to work on your birthday. Thank you very much. Councilman Silverstein has made a number of allegations against members of the city about potential kickbacks, bribery, favoritism, and improper conduct. He underscores this by pointing to an affidavit sworn to by former councilperson Jefferson Wagner. The solution to this, per Councilman Silverstein, is that there be a city council subcommittee form to investigate these issues and be given subpoena power. He further suggests that he and Councilman Euring are the only council members who should be on the committee and the only ones to issue a report. I would suggest that such a committee will not obtain the result that councilperson Silverstein seeks. Other than the allegation of councilperson Wagner of an attempt to bribe him to approve a contractor for the city hall project, whose name he could not remember, the balance of the allegations are just hearsay. The fact he swore to the allegations under oath doesn't change the lack of specificity of those allegations. Councilperson Wagner claims he's heard generally about potential bribery, fraud, favorable treatment, et cetera, but fails to give one fact, name, or specific instance. And I'm not saying he doesn't believe his accusations or question the veracity of former councilperson Wagner. I like him very much. I think he helped the city a lot. But these allegations, so these allegations have to be investigated, but not by a city council committee. When many companies have accusations leveled against the executives and staff for improper conduct, such as alleged, the prudent thing is to have an outside law firm with no ties to the company to fully investigate such claims. Mr. Silverstein knows about this because he states he's done these type of investigations. What we are looking for is a fair, unbiased evaluation. But to put in charge of that investigation, persons who came into office with preconceived accusations about the very thing being investigated will either potentially color their judgment or at best appear to be a Star Chamber or McCarthy-like investigation. The only way for all parties to feel things have been fairly investigated is for a totally independent party with no ties to the city or any candidate to do the investigation and to give them subpoena powers. That's the only way we can address the accusations of wrongdoing in a fair, unbiased way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry.
I don't see Joey Goodman. I will move on to Lance Simmons.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Lance.
Okay, fine. I will try to be very succinct. During this evening's discussion, I was particularly distressed to listen to to listen to Councilman Silverstein's rationale earlier and obstructionist tactics. Just as his legal interpretations may be somewhat misinformed or certainly questionable, his portrayal of the homelessness issue was severely off the mark. I served his six years as Assistant Executive Director of the United States Conference of Mayors. We were known as doing the preeminent research work on homelessness, representing over 850 cities across the nation. I do not believe that he has come to the appropriate conclusion with respect to his research on the issue of homelessness. These things need to be vetted by professional analyses. And whether it's the whether it's the legal interpretation of Martin versus Boise or the issue of homelessness at large, we have, you're on the right track here, Mayor, in making absolutely sure that there is a professional vetting and to have some alternative proposals to stack up against this before you determine what actions you want to take. And there's just one other thing I would leave you with. Decorum, decorum, decorum needs to be exercised in these interchanges between city councilmen. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance.
Next, we'll hear from Walter Zellman.
Can you hear me okay now?
I can hear you, Walter.
Okay, great. Okay. My name is Walter Zellman. I live in Big Rock. I would like to express my support for the direction taken by this measure, Measure 7F, and for the effort to bring maximum transparency to city government. I have a good deal of experience with such measures. For 12 years, I served as Executive Director of California Common Cause, a public interest group that works on issues of ethics, open government, accountability, and particularly campaign finance reform. I worked in at the U.S. level, at the California level, and with some local governments, including Los Angeles. I have seen, reviewed, and in some cases even been a co-author of similar measures, including those approved in the state of California, the city of Los Angeles. I have not had the opportunity to review this specific measure in detail, nor have I been able to compare it to other ethics or transparency rules in other cities. But it's clear that this proposal is a very strong one. Much of it probably reflects rules and regulations that are commonplace in many cities. But it also appears to be pushing boundaries in a variety of places. When it comes to transparency, one general rule a council might follow is more rather than less. More transparency may lead to occasional disclosures that are uncomfortable for some or rules that appear too restrictive. But more transparency is also very likely to reduce the probabilities that council members or city employees will behave improperly or in ways that undermine public confidence in city government. So I would rather accept the risks of inconvenience or of going too far than face the risks of undermining public confidence and not going far enough. Moreover, if you have to make changes in the future, I have always found it easier for government to scale back than to scale up. I encourage the council to look carefully at the proposal and perhaps even consider getting some outside assistance if that will help you do so. But I hope in the end you will embrace the intent and direction of this measure. I hope also that you will not let differences over specific elements be used as levers to undermine or reject the full proposal. I congratulate Councilmembers Silverstein and Euring for bringing this proposal to the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Do you want to go back to Rosemary and see if she's available now?
Of course. Yeah, let's circle back on everybody that we lost on E and F and see if we can find them.
It was her and Lori Patterson, and I see Lori Patterson is not in the meeting anymore, so.
Okay, is Rosemary still here?
She is. We'll see if she's at her device.
Oh, yeah, I see her.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if she's not available, then.
Let's move on.
That concludes public comment.
Well, I said, what about a Michael White or Daphne and Anita or?
Don't see any of them in the meeting.
They're not here. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we are back here at the council. Mr. Cotty, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Have you heard back from the DA?
I have not yet heard back from the district attorney.
Okay. Do you have any way of knowing if or when you expect to hear back from the DA?
I don't, and his letters gave no indication as to when it would be and so I can certainly reach out and find out if that's the council's pleasure.
I personally would appreciate it, absolutely. And I appreciate you taking that step to send it to the outside agency. And I agree, we need to, I don't know how I move forward on this exactly, so, you know, jump in, John, if you need to. But yes, I agree with the speakers who have talked about an outside firm and doing an investigation. We need complete transparency. And I think that we should take steps in that direction. I guess my question is, if we're going to hear from the DA soon, that would be great to know what they have to say, not that maybe it has any impact, but.
Mayor Chris, the council's free to take any additional action it wants. It's not required to wait for the DA to to send it to an outside investigator or take any other action that the council deemed appropriate.
Okay. Okay, I would be very much in favor of a motion towards an outside investigation of the Wagner affidavit. Hang on, I see Bruce, I see you. And thanks for putting up the hand thing. Well done. And that's my comment for now, Bruce.
Okay, so by the way, my reaction thing doesn't have a blue hand to hang up. For some reason, it just has a clap type thing. I'm going to begin with where you just left off, but I have a couple of things I just want to say, and I'm not going to be real long. Barry Haldeman. I'm 100% with you. You said some things about my objectives, which I don't agree with you, and I'd be happy to talk to you about them offline. But I actually agree with what everyone has said about getting an outside investigation, a law firm, a legitimate, good, independent law firm that knows what it's doing in this area. And that would have been my proposal from day one. I've done that. I've done it for a living. It's not the only thing I've done in that arena, but I've done that. Here's the problem. When I was doing that, we were charging $1,000 an hour. In Los Angeles, really good people that know what they're doing are, $1,000 an hour is cheap. Maybe you can get a good attorney to do this for $600 or $700 an hour, maybe. But if you're going to do this right, if you're going to do this, you got to do it right. And I didn't want to suggest that the city should be paying a quarter of a million dollars or more to investigate these allegations. I think that's appropriate. I think that that may be what's necessary to put these to a conclusion, one way or the other. But if it's not done right, it's never going to be reliable. So that is why I had suggested from the beginning that I participate in this because I have the experience and I could do it for free. Not that I want to do it, because I really don't. I'd be happy to have somebody else doing it and it not be part of my life. But I completely concur with everyone who says we should be getting a legitimate, reliable, experienced outside law firm to do this. Just understand that that means we're committing, if we go forward with that, to spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it's the only way it's going to get done right. But so again, I thought Barry's comments were right on point, right on point. Now, it's, you know, it's easy, Edmund Burke said, the only thing necessary for triumph of evil is for good men. Easy, Edmund Burke said, the only thing necessary for triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing. And my heroes have always been people who fight for what's right, for justice and for righteousness. At great cost even. It's not easy fighting for what's right. It's much easier to get along. And believe me, I would much prefer to get along. It would be so much easier. My life would be so much easier. I wouldn't have to deal with the false and bitter accusations of a gladiator lawyer like Mr. Bowdy. And they are false, and I'll be happy to talk to Mr. Bowdy offline to set him straight. But I can't bring myself to get along for the sake of getting along when I see injustice. And I'm not talking about the Wagner affidavit. I'm talking about things that smell. And Lynn Lynn Norton talked about something that was being proposed, not not passing the sniff test. I I'm gonna say this, and I know I'm gonna get flack for it, and I'm sorry, but I have to say it. Sending these things off to the committee of polit- the policy committee that was formed and not addressing them. In and council and with the public, that's sending them off to Sahara. I'm glad I'm home and don't have to smell what City Hall would smell like if I were there today. Hearing these kinds of things. This is just, this is a cover up. It's a whitewash. There are, there are members of the public, there are members of the public clamoring. For reform, for transparency, for accountability, and for ethics. And what this council wants to give them is send it off to a committee comprised of the people who they're concerned about. And let them play with it for a long time, and then we'll see what they come back with, which will be nothing. Statements by some members, and I'm not gonna point out anyone in particular, but. With all due respect, there are some people that made comments tonight that just know not of what they talk about. One of the great examples is that the California Public Records Act is the solution to everything. That's exactly the problem. The California Records Act, as John will tell you, is full of exemptions and exceptions and exclusions. And the thing that is not transparent is what is going on that's exempted and accepted and excluded. And I, as a councilman, can't even find that out. That's the problem, because every time I try to find out what's exempted, excluded, and and separated from what the public's entitled to see, I get stonewalled. And that was the impetus for all of this in the first place. If we were operating in a transparent city, none of this would have been necessary in the first place. So send it off to your whitewash committee. Send the.
That's not fair.
It's my opinion and I'm entitled to state it, and we are in politics here. It's not just about what we believe is business. This is politics.
No one's trying to whitewash anything. We agree with you on your transparency. But I mean, we're trying to be civil. We agreed to try and get along here. Let let we're trying, there is a process here. And and to skip the process invalidates the end result.
The process for appointing people to the committees was appoint anybody but me, except for a committee you didn't care about, so I get. Process, as Mr. Bowdy said, is three to two. Run the city three to two, and we'll have what we want.
That's his opinion. That's not necessarily anyone else's opinion. The public has a right to their opinion too.
And the public can watch what's going on and see that that's exactly what's happening. Okay, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, happy birthday Steve. I did not know it was your birthday here. So I brought forward an idea on. On an outside investigation. That's the topic I'd like to see if there's any consensus on. I think Bruce has generally said yes. Paul?
Mayor Pearson, if I could just interject, I believe you have a motion and a second on the floor.
Oh, I got a second? Why did I miss the second?
Not on the investigation, an earlier motion from, I believe it was you, Ms. Glazer, maybe you can jump in if I'm incorrect.
Yes, you're correct. You are correct. Thank you for reminding.
The motion to send this to the policy.
Right, not the investigation. It doesn't go to the policy. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Steve, you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, how soon will we get this back? We've got a a policy committee that hasn't met and doesn't, can't get. In the past, has not been able to get quarts together, so let's set a timeframe. It says if we're gonna send it to them, we want it to come back within fifteen days, twenty days. Let's make sure we we're moving forward versus throwing this stuff into some hole that we never get it back from. Can we do that?
It's a great question. I'm sure we can.
And let's do it. Let's 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 move the process forward. Let's do stuff. Deals what the residents want us to do in a timeframe that we can actually stand up and say, look, we did something. We made it better. That's what we're here to do.
Now, I'm assuming the policy committee is gonna want to do some investigation or and look at resources. That makes sense. Do you have a vague idea how long, or do you want to come back with that idea?
I definitely want to work with the city attorney. I know he represents other cities. I'd like to see more information from other cities than what I have already. Paul? I don't know what you think.
I think that.
Thirty days? Or whatever, two meetings from now?
Thirty days, yeah.
So thirty days, what will we get back?
I think a draft policy.
A policy?
A draft set of policies.
On on what issue?
Some, city policies. I mean, the the this seven F has, I think. Nine different items outlined in it, but I think actually more than that. We're we're gonna, we're gonna draft a set of policies.
The deal with the items in seventy and seven F. Is that correct?
I'm not taking that as any particular direction. I mean.
Look, I'm just asking what we're gonna get.
We're starting with a blank sheet.
I understand the blank. I want, look, here's the deal. We got an item on the agenda tonight. And Mikey says, let's send it back to the committee to get it done. My, your experience, your voices have said. Then in prior times, you can't get a quorum together, you didn't, and over the years, nothing has happened with that. So let's.
Steve, I'll I'll say what I said earlier.
Hang on.
I was ready at both meetings. The other committee member was not there.
Hang on, I I don't need, what I'm, all I'm trying to do is get an answer that says, if we send it back to you guys, what are we gonna get? And when are we gonna get it? That's all I want to know.
I would suggest that what you're gonna get is. An edited version of what you've given us. For example, if I if I may give an example. On page seven and eight of fifty. There's A through D. And in order to do those things, we, it's all a violation of the Brown Act. So I I don't see how we can do A through D on pages seven and eight.
I'm I'm asking you what you can't do. I want to know what you can do.
We will come back with a draft, very simple.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Steve? We vote as a body.
Something actionable.
We are, we are moving an item to the committee. And all I want to do is understand how fast, how effective that committee is gonna be in giving us what. There there is a movement that says, let's go with transparency and accountability.
This is the late January meeting or or the second attempt at it. If if Paul thinks that he can work with me and will work with the city attorney, I would guess the late February meeting. Does that sound reasonable, John, Paul?
Thirty days.
Well, I don't know if that's thirty days from today. I'm saying the late February meeting.
Just in terms of.
Unless you want to have a special meeting for it.
Don't know. I just want to get it done.
So just in terms of noticing, I would suggest that you target the first meeting in March, because the second meeting in February will only. A couple of weeks to get it done before the agenda goes out, so.
Okay, that makes sense for me. The the early March meeting, I don't know the date of that.
Can I ask a quick question? Are we gonna focus on the items in the? Seven F, are we gonna look at all the other policies that are not also mentioned?
Okay, look, we have an existing set of policies that's cobbled together over the course of many years. I think Paul and I want to start with a. A blank document and and create a set of policies. I don't, I don't think we simply try to edit seven F. And I don't think we simply try to edit the current policies.
I don't know what that means. Are we gonna come back with a response to what we've got on the agenda tonight regarding transparency and accountability? Or are you gonna give us back something that had, that's nothing to do with that?
I I I'm I'm not gonna try to guess right now. We're gonna come out with a set of city policies.
Oh, no, 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 you can't.
Hang on Steve, hang on Steve. Yes, it's Bruce's turn.
So. I I suggest that we trust the committee to do what the committee de. Appropriate. It'll come back with what it'll come back with, and that'll be judged for what it is in the community, and we will all see what it is, and it'll either be. Something that's satisfactory to people, or it will be something that's unsatisfactory to people, and that'll be up to the committee to satisfy the public or not satisfy the public.
Okay.
I I do have one question. About seven F. And I wonder, I looked it up in, I can't remember the name of the source, but there was more than one. There are about nineteen thousand five hundred municipalities in the United States. I'm sure some of you might have been curious about that at times as well. I'd like to know from Steve or Bruce, how many other of those cities have a similar policy to yours?
What does that make a difference? The difference is what is right for Malibu? What is right for us? If I gotta, if I gotta base all my decisions on what somebody else is doing, I'm not. What we're focused on is let's do what's right for our community.
So so let's get to work. I I wanna call the item.
I'll answer, can I answer the question that Karen asked of me or no?
Go ahead.
Short, please, short.
So the the answer is, to my knowledge, I I'm not aware of a single municipality that has identically everything that's been proposed there, but if I let. But let me finish. If I let that get in the way of every time I had a legal issue that I wanted to pursue. And said, oh, unless it's been decided before, it must be, it must not be worth it or it'll fail, I would have not won a hublot of cases that I won.
That was not my question, but thank you.
Okay, let's let's call the item and get, let's get it moving here.
So what is. Trying to put words in my mouth, thank you.
Can.
Oh, I can, can I, can I address one thing that was brought up by Hamish?
Please.
I just want to make sure that he and others know. The Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee selected by the COG, that is who selects it. And Malibu, in our COG, Malibu is the only coastal city. And so. Agora Hills, Calabasas, Westlake Village, and Hidden Hills. My understanding is traditionally have asked that. One of the Malibu COG representatives, and it is an elected representative, be the rep. To the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee. And as the only coastal city, I think that makes sense. And just in case anyone didn't know, the previous representative from our COG was Jefferson Wagner.
Okey dokey.
Okay, can we call the item, please Heather, or roll call or?
Mikey, can you repeat the item we're calling?
The direct matter to the city council policy ad hoc. For review and return in, do we want to say thirty days, or do you want to make that? Do you want to commit to a meeting date?
I'd like to say the early March meeting. I'm looking for that date.
March eighth?
As long as. Paul and our city attorney think that that's a reasonable amount of time to come up with a draft, I think it's. I think it's good.
That's fine.
Cool.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
No.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Hang on one second. Lot of pieces of paper here tonight.
Time to adjourn, huh?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
I was hoping we could. I guess let's agendize then. I would ask if John can check with the DA, see where they're at for what it's worth. And see if we can get a response. And then. I think we need to, I'd like consensus to agendize, talking about an outside investigation.
Okay, just piece of information for your, for everybody. The DA is not the only law enforcement body that has this.
That's great. I, the more the merrier, as far as I'm concerned. That's great. I mean, we want transparency, no matter how people perceive it, I'm all for it. So. Do we have consensus to bring back an item on doing our own?
Putting out a request for.
Thank you, yes, our own outside investigation. Okay?
I say yes.
Okay, we have Paul.
Mayor Pearson, I think I heard a couple of things. One is bring it back, but I then heard bring back a request for proposals for outside investigators. Just want to be clear on what the motion is.
I'm willing to go to bringing back proposals if we're, or do we want to have a meeting where we discuss it as an agendized item?
So here, I have a question. I'm not, I'm not understanding. I have a genuine question. I want to understand something. I've dealt with a lot of government bodies that were hiring lawyers to do specialized things. And I've seen outside that context, lots of requests or proposal for general legal work. But I've also seen lots of times when specialized things like this were being pursued. It was just they they interview, they do a beauty contest, they interview law firms, and they hire somebody. It's not done through an RFP. Does this have to be done through an RFP as a legal matter?
Good question.
No, no, it does not. This is specialized service. But we would staff any direction on which firms to go.
Just just like you hired the personal, but the um, the the law firm to pursue the Woolsey Fire litigation. That wasn't done through an RFP. It was done through, let's find a really good firm. And let's just interview people.
That wasn't RSP actually, unless I'm totally mistaken, yeah. We had a number of firms sending proposals, as I remember, three of them.
And actually, they were not law firms in that case.
Yeah, they were.
No, 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 the the litigation.
Oh, 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 sorry, I misunderstood your question. I misunderstood your question.
The SCE litigation, that was not done through an RFP, correct?
I don't, I'm not the person to answer that. I think I know the answer, but I don't want to mess it up.
Was actually hired by other municipalities, and then we became part of that litigation.
I couldn't hear that.
Other municipalities initiated and we joined the lawsuit.
But you just, but you, based on a just an individualized determination that that was deferred to hire, it wasn't through a process, the same RFP, through a formal RFP process.
The city councils, I believe, voted on it, as I remember.
I'm just, so I'm just suggesting that if it's if it's lawful to not do it through the RFP process, I think that's a little artificial for this kind of of specific, specific assignment. That's my, that's my experience.
Okay, so you suggest targeting certain firms?
Yes, I suggest that we somehow find a way consistent with the Brown Act to figure out who we should select to speak to. And do so that it's not the kind of thing that you put out a request or proposal for.
Okay, John, would it be, I'm gonna wing it here, would it be appropriate for individual city council members to discuss this with you? In the look for a firm?
Yes, you can all forward me names of people that you you might know. That'd be fine, and we can figure out a way to get them before you. For decision.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Sure.
Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, so. The motion would be then to. It's not an RFP. Look for a law firm to investigate the Wagner affidavit. It's a specialized service. City council members should feel welcome to talk with our attorney. John Cotty, if they have recommendations for firms to to invite to make a proposal. And I'll look for a second on that.
I'll second.
Okay, can I have roll call on that, please?
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, now motion to adjourn?
I would like to motion to adjourn in memory of Kathy Sullivan, who started off on Monday. Kathy was Malibu. And we should remember her.
Yeah, well said, Stephen, and once again, happy birthday. Congratulations for spending your. Congratulations for spending your evening here.
Every birthday is a good one, Mikey.
Yes, and I want to thank the public for all their input tonight. A lot of great input, very much appreciated, and I wish everyone a good night.
Adios, guys. Thank you very much.
So we need a roll call on adjournment or no?
And that adjournment was already done on Monday, and we already prepared the notice of, yeah, we're good.
Interesting.
Thanks, guys. Adios, bye bye.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you for your help.
All right.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.